Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegocounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the "Register" button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the "in-person" option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit "Register," and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Excuse me. Just want to let folks know there's a couple supervisors stuck in traffic. So we're going to be starting in about seven minutes. We're waiting for them. Thank you.
Good morning. I will now call the October 21st, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting and Housing Authority Meeting to Order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are an example of one community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples, who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, most in any county in the United States. And we aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences and undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer, Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Desmond,
Here.
Chair Partemagiri.
Here.
Vice Chair Montgomery Step.
Here.
And Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. We will now have Pastor Michael Dunn, Senior, deliver the invocation, and Michael Mackey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Good morning to everyone. Today, it is a sincere honor to be with you, a county of communities, for this invocation. Please join in bowing our heads for reverence. O mighty God, may we be guided by compassion, strengthened in community, and steadfast in our commitment for one another. For we are indeed a county of communities. On behalf of the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors, we offer our sincere desire in this moment that all in attendance today center in the silence of compassion, community, and commitment as we celebrate proclamations and policies being made today. Dear God, let us pause for a moment of reflection in unity. Today, may we continue in the spirit of compassion, compassion that reminds us of the lies behind the policies, the families behind the statistics, and the human stories that bring us together in this shared work. Let the compassion ground us in community, the vibrant and diverse community that makes San Diego County strong, a community where every voice matters and where we rise by lifting one another. And may our community inspire lasting commitment, a commitment to serve with integrity, to lead with vision, and to continue to honor the proclamations and policies made today with action that uplifts all people across our county. Finally, dear God, may this gathering today reflect our highest values as we are reminded to walk forward together with compassion in our hearts, community at our side, and commitment guiding our way. It is a responsibility we hold together as a county of communities. Godhead, in holy reverence, hear our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your hand over the heart, or place your hand over your heart and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the proclamations. The first proclamation will be given by myself, honoring Faith the Surfing Pitbull. Accepting the proclamation will be Faith and James Wall. Amazing. Hi. So awesome. He's the greatest. So, good morning. Today, I'm absolutely stoked to celebrate a true San Diego four-legged legend who has made waves here and across the country, Faith the Surfing Pitbull. In 2012, James Wall found Faith and her brother, eighth... sorry, Action Ace, abandoned in a parking garage. James got them checked out by a vet and then brought them home to foster through the holidays. Well, that foster plan, total wipeout, in the best way, it quickly turned into a classic foster failure as Faith found her forever pack. So once she settled in, James took Faith to the beach, introduced her to the ocean, and she took to the Board like a natural. That first surf session launched a 13-year wave-riding career that would make any surfer, two-legged or four, jealous. And if you haven't seen Faith in action, you absolutely need to look her up on YouTube. Over the years, Faith has paddled out and crushed it in competitions across the country, including the World Dog Surfing Championships, the ESPN World Dog Surfing Championships, and our very own Helen Woodward Animal Center Surf-a-thon in Del Mar. Faith has earned 30 medals, 21 of them first-place finishes. So after 13 amazing years on the water, Faith is officially hanging up her competition board. But don't worry, she'll be still stoking up the sun and dropping in on all of our waves out in the lineup. So to honor her journey, her dad, James, put together a highlight reel of her greatest hits over the year. Let's take a look.
Today, I'm absolutely stoked to celebrate a true San Diego four-legged legend who has made waves here and across the country, Faith the Surfing Pitbull. In 2012, James Wall found Faith and her brother, eighth, sorry, Action Ace, abandoned in a parking garage. James got them checked out by a vet and then brought them home to foster through the holidays. While that foster plan, total wipeout in the best way, it quickly turned into a classic foster failure as Faith found her forever pack. So, once she settled in, James took Faith to the beach, introduced her to the ocean, and she took to the board like a natural. That first surf session launched a 13-year wave-riding career that would make any surfer, two-legged or four, jealous. If you haven't seen Faith in action, you absolutely need to look her up on YouTube. Over the years, Faith has paddled out and crushed it in competitions across the country, including the World Dog Surfing Championships, the ESPN World Dog Surfing Championships, and our very own Helen Woodward Animal Center Surf-a-thon in Del Mar. Faith has earned 30 medals, 21 of them first-place finishes. So, after 13 amazing years on the water, Faith has officially hung up her competition board, but don't worry, she'll be still stoking up the sun and dropping in on all of our waves out in the lineup. So, to honor her journey, her dad, James, put together a highlight reel of her greatest hits over the year. Let's take a look. Oh. That's amazing. Maybe you can teach my six-year-old how to surf. So, as Sports Illustrated once put it, Faith's the coolest dog of all time, but I think even that doesn't quite capture just how awesome she is. So, now therefore be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors that on this 21st day of October 2025, we proudly commend Faith the Surfing Pitbull and declare this day to be Faith the Surfing Pitbull Day throughout San Diego County. Where do you want her for photos? Here? Okay. Do you want to stand on the board? Do you want to stand on the board? Then pull the board down. Do you like, always like to join us? Thank you, Palopa.
So, I wasn't really prepared to say much, but I will. It's been an incredible journey. Like I said, Faith was found in a parking garage, and the surfing thing was just something that I go out and do, having fun with my dog. The best part of it is sharing her and her experiences with everyone else. We bring smiles to faces, and you don't know what people are going through in life, and if you can change one person's life with just seeing her surf and smile, makes it all worth it. You can stay up here with me, sweetheart. I get the pleasure of working with Faith every year, every six months or so. She is an amazing pup. Hello there. My name's Mike. I'm from Helen Woodward Animal Center. I'm one of the PR managers, just here to share a couple things about our surf dog, surf competition, and Faith, who has been an amazing part of it for the past 13 years. So, a little backstory, Helen Woodward Animal Center Surf Dog Service Salon just saw the completion of its 20th year. Faith has been part of more than half of that. Think of that. The idea for the fundraiser got started when one of our employees back in the day saw a dog riding a board at the beach with their owner and thought, well, that sure is a little different than walking. What began with a handful of pups has continued to grow each year, seeing hundreds and close to 1,000 people throughout the one-day event gather on Del Mar's Dog Beach to watch is what is now more than 70 dogs taking part riding boards, single, like she does, tandem, like I've seen her do, tandem with their owner, trio, and in one case, in dozen. We have one lady who rides with 11 Chihuahuas and her Beagle. Take a look at our video. One of the top dogs, a best-in-board, as I like to refer to, is Faith. Faith and her owner, James, have been competing in the event for 13 years and have gathered quite the recognition and following, both in our Helen Woodward Animal Center community and on social media. Just like you can check out their YouTube, check out @FaithSurfs on Instagram. For any of you guys who don't follow, I highly recommend. It's a great bit of joy injected into your day. With her classic neon green vest and a bright wide-angle dog goggles that she's not wearing, but she's known for, she's hard to miss on a wave, as you guys saw. But the most notable part about Faith is not her reflective face wear, but instead her energy. Faith has won her class at our Surf Dog Event nine different times, taking the overall best-in-surf title itself three times, and placing on the podium a bunch more. Most recently, she took top crown just a few weeks ago on September 7th for our 20th Annual Event. You'd think, being out in the sun, she'd have a little bit more of a tan, but what doesn't slow down Faith is her spirit and her tail. Anytime you walk up to her, like many of you did entering the chambers here today, she's always happy to give you a soft lick, wag her tail, and say hello. Faith and James, you are both prime examples for not just what pet owners have, but for everyone of the immeasurable bond any animal can share with a person. Pause for a lick. It's also representative of the distinctive personalities that dogs and all animals can have. All animals are their own unique individuals, just like humans. She has her own great personality. Highly recommend saying hi to her and learning it. But sun, surf, sand, and a shaggy dog, you guys are the perfect embodiment of San Diego. Faith, we wish you well riding a surf session at sunset onto the wave of retirement. Thank you for the years of funds and smiles, but the most important thing is, good dog.
Thank you. Thank you, Faith. Thank you, James. The second proclamation will be given by myself. Am I? This is crooked. Yeah. Okay. The second proclamation will be given by myself and Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp honoring Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Accepting the proclamation will be my mother, Sherri Lawson, and Pilar Dunn. Okay. Good morning. I'm so grateful to stand alongside my colleague, Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Stepp, to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This one hits very close to home for me. My mom, who I'm lucky to have here with me today, and her Aunt Kay and her cousin Becky have all been and were all diagnosed with breast cancer. So, I'm endlessly thankful my mom is still here and still her strong self. A breast cancer diagnosis doesn't just affect one person, it ripples through families, friendships, and workplaces. I've seen that not just in my own family, but here in our county as well. From moms and aunts to sisters, coworkers, and friends, this disease has touched so many of us. My own chief of staff sister, Megan, is in the middle of her fight against breast cancer. Managing cancer treatment is no easy task. Having family and friends for support makes it possible. Watching someone you love fight through, that changes you. The good news is, progress is real. Since 1989, breast cancer deaths in the United States have dropped by nearly half, thanks to early detection and better treatment. That's more than half a million lives saved. Early detection truly saves lives. When caught early, the five-year survival rate is 99%. A monthly self-exam and regular screening makes all the difference, and it's something all of us must remind the women in our lives to do. My mom found her tumor by a self-exam, and it's worth remembering, breast cancer risk can come through your dad's side of the family, too, not just your mom's. This was the case in my own family. So, today, we honor the memory of those we've lost, and we celebrate the survivors whose story reminds us what strength looks like. And to everyone in our community and in our county who's in treatment right now, you are not alone. You have doctors, family, friends, and an entire community behind you. I will now hand the floor over to Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Hi, Mom. Good morning, everyone. I'm really honored to join my colleague in recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month, honoring both those who have survived this devastating disease and those who have lost their battle. Today, we take a moment to acknowledge the reality that so many individuals and families in our community live with every single day. Breast cancer is a life-changing experience that touches nearly every part of a person's world, physically, emotionally, financially, and mentally. To the survivors here with us, thank you for showing us what it means to move through something incredibly hard and still keep going. Your strength is not just in the fight, but also in your vulnerability and your continued presence in this world. To Mrs. Pilar Dunn, I love you.
I do, too.
And this is my community rep, Joshua Dunn, his mother, with us today, and a lot of my church family is here, too. And for the rest of us standing here today, and to even those who in the chamber have lost loved ones currently battling, or have loved ones currently battling or have lost loved ones to this disease, our hearts are with you. Grief does not follow a calendar, and we know the impact of breast cancer continues long after October ends. One of the ways that we honor those who are no longer with us is by continuing to raise awareness. It's also important that we acknowledge the disparities that still exist in who gets screened, who gets cared, who gets heard. Awareness is only the first step. Action and equity must follow. One of the most powerful tools that we have in the fight against breast cancer is early detection. When cancer is caught in an early stage, successful treatment increases. That's why screening, mammograms, clinical exams, and prompt follow-up are so very important. In San Diego County, the incidence rate of breast cancer is about 44.5 cases per 100,000 people, slightly above the state baseline. These statistics remind us that we still have a long way to go, especially in ensuring that underserved communities have access to screening, education, and care. We must advocate for equity in healthcare access so that all women in every neighborhood receive the same opportunity for early detection and care. With our advocacy, we have the opportunity to save lives and to make a difference for families and loved ones. And so, with that, I will read the last line of the proclamation. Be it proclaimed by Chair Lawson Reamer and all of the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 21st day of October 2025, that they commend the individuals impacted by breast cancer for their outstanding service, for their leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this month to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout San Diego County. Okay, let's have, you want to speak first and then take the picture? I'll put it up here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pilar Dunn, and I stand before you today as a two-time breast cancer survivor, but more importantly, as a living reminder of hope, early detection, and the power of community. I'm a transplant by way of the military service. I now have the pleasure of calling this beautiful city of San Diego my home. When I first heard the words, "You have breast cancer," my world stopped. When I heard them again years later, I knew I was being tested, not just in body, but in spirit. Through my faith, family, and incredible network of support, I found the strength I didn't know I had. Breast cancer doesn't just change your body, it transforms your spirit. It teaches you strength you didn't know you had and reminds you that every sunrise is a gift. It taught me to appreciate every moment of life, to slow down and to never take a single day for granted. Surviving twice has taught me that awareness saves lives. Being here today is a powerful reminder of my faith, early detection, incredible doctors, and the unwavering support of my loved ones. Today, as I accept this proclamation on behalf of all those who have fought the fight, though still in the battle, and for the angels who moved on, I want to thank Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Stepp for this wonderful proclamation. I also want to thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp, for your tireless work in District Four. You are seen, your life teaches, and your integrity is your testimony, and I'm here to support your efforts in any way that I can. I thank all of our county leaders for shining a light on awareness, early detection, and the importance of supporting each other, because awareness saves lives. I am living proof. To everyone out there facing this battle, you are not alone, you are stronger than you know. There is life, both beautiful and meaningful life, after breast cancer. Thank you for honoring this cause and for helping to make our community one of hope, courage, and healing. Thank you.
I don't know what to say after that. That was so perfect and so beautiful and so all-inclusive. My heart goes out to the families who've actually lost people. Those of us who are here are counting our blessings every day, because when you get that diagnosis, you think it's all over. You have to pick yourself up, put one foot in front of the other. And we're the lucky ones. We are so lucky, but my heart goes out to all of those who have lost family members and friends in the fight. And, you know, we just have to have hope and do the best we can and be thankful for every day we have on this planet. Be strong, be vigilant, be advocates for ourselves. I found my tumor. I was taking a shower, and my husband told me that a friend of ours had breast cancer, and I said, "Oh, God, I have to do that breast exam," which I never did, because, you know, people just don't even think it's going to work. And lo and behold, I found the tumor, and that was the beginning. It was a long struggle, but here we are. So, be vigilant, be strong, and be your own advocate.
The third proclamation will be given by Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Stepp honoring Filipino-American History Month. Accepting the proclamation will be the County of San Diego Filipino-American Employees Association.
Okay, come on up. Hi. Good morning again, everyone. I'm very proud to stand here again this October to celebrate and honor Filipino-American History Month, and I'm honored to recognize the incredible contributions of Filipino-Americans across San Diego County and beyond. I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the county's Filipino Employee Association for your continued leadership, cultural celebration, and efforts to build unity across our workforce. You remind us all that diversity is not just something we recognize, it's something that we live. Filipino-Americans are among the fastest-growing immigrant groups in the United States, and their influence can be seen in every part of our community, from healthcare to education to public service, the military, the arts, and more. We also remember and uplift the vital role of Filipino farmworkers in the 1960s United Farmworkers Movement. Leaders like Larry Idliang stood with Cesar Chavez to demand dignity and rights for working people in California. That legacy of advocacy still inspires us today, and we continue to honor the nearly 250,000 Filipino-American World War II veterans, whose service, sacrifice, and patriotism remain a cornerstone of our nation's history. We also see strength of the Filipino-American We also see strength of the Filipino community every day in our healthcare system, where Filipino-Americans have long been pillars of care as nurses, doctors, and frontline caregivers, both locally and globally. To the Filipino-American community in District 4 and to every county employee of Filipino descent, we thank you. Thank you for your compassion, your resilience, your commitment to family, and your deep respect for elders. These are values we must all strive to remember in our work and in our lives. I'm proud to represent you, to work alongside you, and to continue advocating for a county that celebrates all cultures and communities. And with that, let me read the last line of the proclamation. Be it proclaimed by Chair Lawson Reamer and all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 21st day of October 2025, that they commend the County of San Diego Filipino-Americans Employees Association for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this month to be Filipino-American History Month throughout San Diego County. Congratulations.
I'm a little shorter, so. Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Filipino-American community and as President of the County of San Diego Filipino-American Employees Association, we are honored to accept this proclamation recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month, presented by Vice Chair Monica Montgomery-Steph. This proclamation celebrates the rich history and contributions of Filipino-Americans in the United States. It also affirms the importance of visibility, representation, and baya nihan, or unity. It uplifts our stories and the strength of our shared identity as we continue to be woven into the broader American history. As we reflect on the past and celebrate the present, may this proclamation serve as a reminder that our voices, cultures, histories matter. Thank you for this recognition and your continued support. Mabuhay, and happy Filipino-American History Month. Thank you. The fourth proclamation will be given by Chair Protem Agiri honoring the Sherman Heights Dia de los Muertos Celebration. Accepting the proclamation will be Daniela Kelly.
Good morning. Today, I am honored to be presenting this proclamation in recognition of the Sherman Heights Community Center's Dia de los Muertos Celebration Day. The Sherman Heights Center, a pillar in our community, fostering community through education, cultural enrichment, health promotion, and personal development. The center anchors a series of events that beautifully reflects the values of remembrance, resilience, and unity that define this special time of year. I especially want to recognize Executive Director Daniela Kelly, Frank, and all the members of the board that are here today and staff for all the years of leadership and passion that made the Sherman Heights Community Center what it is today. Dia de los Muertos has always been one of my favorite holidays. It is a time that invites us to honor our loved ones, celebrate life, and reflect on the beauty and resilience of our culture. And while the holiday itself is November 1st, it's a joy to be here today to recognize those who keep its spirit alive all month long. For more than four decades, the Sherman Heights Community Center has stood as a cornerstone of culture, education, and empowerment, uplifting generations of families through programs that celebrate heritage, community, and opportunity. In 1994, community members introduced Dia de los Muertos to Sherman Heights, transforming the center into a gathering place where art, memory, and culture intertwine. Since then, this celebration has honored the traditions of Mexico while nurturing a uniquely San Diego expression of life and remembrance. What began as a modest neighborhood altar display has blossomed into one of the region's longest-running and most beloved cultural events, drawing thousands of residents, artists, and visitors each year to celebrate through music, food, dance, and creative expression. Over 31 years, the Sherman Heights Dia de los Muertos Celebration has served as both a reflection of this neighborhood's deep-rooted cultural pride and a living bridge connecting past, present, and future generations. This incredible success has been made possible by the dedication of countless volunteers, families, artists, local partners who have kept this tradition thriving and evolving, demonstrating the true power of community to preserve culture and foster unity. This year, the County of San Diego proudly recognizes the Sherman Heights Community Center for its 41 years of service and leadership, and for 31 years of hosting a Dia de los Muertos Celebration that embodies the spirit of remembrance, resilience, and cultural legacy. This year, I am happy to share we have partnered with the Sherman Heights Community Center and others to celebrate Dia de los Muertos right here at the County Administration Center on the East Plaza on November 1st from 4 to 7. We invite all of you to send a photograph of your loved one, including loved pets that you may have lost, for our community of frienda. Our community of frienda or altar will be dedicated to the many immigrants whose journey ended but dreams live on. With that said, the center's month-long festivities have brought families together through October, and we're honored to continue that tradition in collaboration with them here at the county. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Chairwoman Tara Lawson Reamer and all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors do hereby declare October 21st, 2025 to be Sherman Heights Community Center's Dia de los Muertos Celebration Day throughout San Diego County, commending the Sherman Heights Community Center for its unwavering commitment to cultural preservation, community engagement, and intergenerational connection. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Francisco Soto, and I'm Programs Manager at the Sherman Heights Community Center. We thank the Board of Supervisors for this proclamation that we accept, and very kindly. I'd like to let you know that Dia de los Muertos is not just a celebration, but it's honoring the ones that we loved and passed away. It is very spiritual. It's culture and it's tradition and history. We like to express our feelings through the ofrendas and our gratitude to those who we loved in the past. We also like to ensure that this tradition, it doesn't end here, but continues with the new generations. We are proud to have all this celebration throughout the month and bringing a lot of the kids to show them what the celebration means and not forget what the celebration is, as well as keep the culture, the traditions, and many other things that this beautiful celebration is. We not only celebrate the members of our community, but all surrounding communities. We are very proud to that every year is bigger and bigger, and we have all this beautiful, beautiful celebration that it's, like I mentioned before, it's from the heart and the spirituals. For those who are not here with us, bringing a picture and something that one of our family members loved, it's always something in our hearts. Thank you for this proclamation, and we hope to continue with this celebration and the partnership with the community. Thanks.
Okay, and the final... Oh, sorry.
Okay. Now, the final proclamation will be given by Supervisor Desmond honoring Crime Prevention Month. Accepting the proclamation will be Edith Sanchez-Cruz.
Sheriff, are you going to say a few words? Edith, okay, Edith is... Okay, good. Good, good, good. You're welcome, yeah. I didn't want to outrank you here. Well, thank you. Before we move on with this proclamation honoring our crime prevention unit and Crime Prevention Month, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for La Mesa Police Officer Laura Craven. She's 25 years old. She was killed last night, along with others, on a horrific... Excuse me, in a horrific accident on the 8th freeway. If you could take a moment of silence, please, for Lauren Craven. Well, good morning. It is my proud honor and absolute pleasure to welcome Sheriff Kelly Martinez and some... It looks like most of her staff here today. First of all, her assistant, Sheriff Rick Lopez, is here. Captain Alex Navarro, Lieutenant Dave Perkins, Lieutenant John Spock, who I was told rhymes with Bach. Nadia Morschiniem? Is that right? Morschirium? All right, bend her up. She's the International Affairs Specialist Assistant. Edith Sanchez-Cruz, a Community Inclusion Director. And Heather Clark, Crime Prevention Manager. And the majority of the outstanding crime prevention specialists all here today. So I want to say thank you very much and thank you for your public service and for joining us here today. We're glad to have you. As we recognize National Crime Prevention Month, we're reminded that public safety, it's not just the job of law enforcement officers, it's also a shared responsibility. So across the country, and right here in San Diego County, this month is about awareness, action, and community partnership. So the San Diego County Sheriff's Office of Crime Prevention Unit is proud to lead this effort locally. They have a dedicated team of 15 crime prevention specialists alongside patrol units, and they connect with communities through more than 250 events countywide annually, from Neighborhood Watch meetings to senior safety fairs and resource programs. But their mission is clear: to empower residents with the tools and knowledge to prevent crime before it happens. And it's about building safer neighborhoods and building trust. So as we head into the busy holiday season, there are campaigns on package theft. Don't leave packages in the backseat of your car, all wrapped up, looking pretty, where everybody can see them. Package theft, shopping safety, home security. We all go and visit friends and relatives. We want to make sure our homes are secure, and they also want to help and ensure that we are safe and confident in our homes and in our communities. So let's use this month to strengthen our partnerships, sharp and spark important conversations, and work together to keep San Diego a place where we can all be proud to call home and be safe. So whereas the County of San Diego were committed to recognizing and honoring individuals and institutions that serve the... that have the best ideals of public service, and the San Diego County Sheriff's Office of Crime Prevention Unit is one such worthy organization. So be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 21st day of October 2025, that we hereby declare this month to be San Diego County's... Okay, wait a second. We have a drum roll, please. This San Diego County Sheriff's Office Crime Prevention Month throughout San Diego County. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do and being here today. To Edith. Okay, we have Edith Sanchez-Cruz going to be giving us some remarks.
Yes. Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Desmond, colleagues, and community partners. It is with deep gratitude and great honor that I accept the proclamation on behalf of the Crime Prevention Unit at the San Diego County Sheriff's Office. As someone newly entrusted with leading this extraordinary team, I am continually inspired by their unwavering dedication to our mission and their passion for serving our communities. Our team focuses on three pillars: education, outreach, and engagement. These aren't just words. They're the foundation of meaningful connections with the people we serve. You may have met one of our crime prevention specialists at a hallmark event like National Night Out or perhaps over a cup of coffee at Coffee with the Community. These specialists are the boots-on-the-ground champions of public safety who bring campaigns to life, like, for example, this week, Red Ribbon Week, which promotes drug use prevention. They foster trust through Neighborhood Watch meetings that empower residents to take an active role in their safety. They deliver presentations on important topics such as e-bike safety, fraud awareness, internet safety, and they show up at resource fairs with tools that make a real difference, like free vacation home checks, the Take Me Home program, which is a registry for family members with a medical condition or special need that tend to wander off. This information shared with us is critical for deputies to find them. They also stay connected with residents through the Nextdoor app. They attend collaborative meetings. They coordinate and/or promote programs like our Rise Above, Junior Women's Academy, Spanish Academy, or Community Academy. These efforts are not just informative, they are transformative. Two years ago in October, with the support of Supervisor Desmond, the Sheriff's Office launched the Blue Envelope Program, which was discovered by one of our crime prevention specialists and led to the creation of a countywide initiative designed to promote inclusivity and enhance communication between law enforcement and individuals with conditions such as autism, spectrum disorder, dementia, anxiety, and other disabilities. This program is a testament to what happens when compassion meets inclusivity. Every handshake, every conversation, every event is a step toward fulfilling the mission of the San Diego Sheriff's Office, which is to provide the highest-quality public safety service to everyone in San Diego County. We do this under the visionary leadership of Sheriff Kelly Martinez, whose commitment to community-first policing empowers us to serve with empathy and excellence. To our family, friends, station leaders who came out to support us today, thank you. Your encouragement fuels our purpose. Thank you Supervisor Desmond and the entire Board of Supervisors for this recognition. It affirms the value of community-centered policing and reminds us that together we are building safer, stronger neighborhoods, one connection at a time. Thank you.
There's a dog here on the podium.
I hope you're not saying anything negative about our surfing dog. Okay, thank you all very much. So before we begin this meeting, I'd like to take a moment to address some House rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparent and accountable government, and these Board of Supervisors' meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Diegans can make their voices heard. The county is committed to work environment-free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, and any other forms of discrimination or harassment. Under the Board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud, shouting, threatening, impertinent, slanderous, profane, or abusive language to any member of the Board, staff, or the general public. Additionally, all remarks and questions must remain on topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the Board and not to county staff. Any speaker who engages in comments that breaks these rules will be issued a warning. After one warning, you will be asked to leave the chambers for the remainder of the meeting. Finally, speakers threatening violence may be reported to law enforcement and removed. This is a space for community engagement deliberation and progress, not for harassment, violence, and hate. So we will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda today. Again, subject matters that are within the Board's jurisdiction. The only action we may take is a referral to the CIO. Under the Board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public comment, either at today's session or tomorrow's session, but not both, and speakers may select which to address at your convenience. For non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers by phone at the beginning of the meeting. The first five speakers will be randomly selected. The remainder will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers, individuals have one minute to share their opinion. A reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are not English-speaking and need interpretation assistance receive twice the allotted time for their comments. And a final reminder, according to the Board's rules of procedure, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, will be given one warning, and after that warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Raimer. We have 25 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, 13 in person, and 12 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers, and will now randomly call, randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the Board, and I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first five individuals, beginning with the first three: Angelica Camargo, Mark, Darwin Fishman, will be followed by Michael Brando and Jessica Heredia. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Angelica Camargo. I'm an active member of the Spring Valley Coalition. I'm here today because our community is hurting, and we need your attention, all of you guys. Spring Valley has over 200 registered sexual offenders, while other districts have none or yes, two. How is that fair for our families, our childrens? They have to live at this level of risk, while in another areas are protected. We feel like our safety doesn't matter. Spring Valley deserves the same protection of any other district. We deserve the same respect, for the same respect of other communities in San Diego. Please just look at the numbers, but more importantly, look at the people who live here, that we deserve better than that. Spring Valley brings revenue to the San Diego County, and none of that revenue is stayed in Spring Valley. We don't have sidewalks, we have a lot of group homes, we don't have enough sheriffs, we don't have enough first responders. So we're tired to be the trash can of the San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, please.
Mark, I advocate for peace toward everyone. Ground Act 54954.3C, I have the right to critique omissions. You supervisors have neglected to point out the problems this Board is tasked with, cannot be solved without addressing these systematic problems: wealth inequality in America. Harvard Business Professor did this study. Nine out of 10 Democrats and Republicans want this wealth distribution curve, which we do not have. See these YouTube video titles, also see usdecock.org. National debt is approaching $38 trillion. Government shutdown is a fact, not a conspiracy theory. Unsustainable, caused by Federal Reserve. Interest on U.S. debt is more than we spend on anything else, including defense. Thomas Jefferson quote, "If the American people ever allow private banks to control the issue of their money, first by inflation and then by deflation, the banks and corporations that will go up around them will deprive the people of their property until their children will wake up homeless on the continent their fathers conquered," end quote. You're witnessing this in real time, and the board's policy is to mitigate the homeless that inflation has caused. Newsom is a young global leader for the World Economic Forum, which is a foreign organization. He must not be allowed in government, and his supervisor's sworn oath of office to oppose him. Forcing the middle class to subsidize low-income housing instead of stopping inflation is destroying our state and country. Everywhere Newsom forces his mixed-use low-income buildings, we, the people in each area, oppose them. Newsom ignores the will of the people, so his policies are tyrannical by definition. You supervisors are sworn to oppose him and his foreign WEF policies. Instead, you have neglected your oath of office. And finally, general AI will destroy us if it is created. Narrow AI could be used to help people in the workplace. Instead, it is planned to replace people and destroy our economy. The phrase "by 2030, you shall own nothing and be happy" is from an essay by Ida Okam, which was on the World Economic Forum's website. You will not be happy, as the WEF corporations own everything you need to live, while you live like a serf to lords under feudalism, and this AI global controls.
Thank you. Time is up. Next speaker, please.
Michael, I'm going to start my speech with what I usually end with. How good can it get? I love that Faith, Faith Monica Montgomery-Stepford was honored today. I've gotten to see her many times surfing, it was great. I got to talk to James outside as well. Let's talk about trust. Trust in all jurisdictions has been disintegrating, and it's self-imploding. That means something new is coming forward, and I said that people are going to create their own life without depending on people that lie, steal, manipulate, gaslight, and systemically narcissistic abuse, Monica Montgomery-Stepford. And this is not about race, and Paloma Gary, this is not about being a woman. You said and attacked speakers by saying that they're all misogynistic. No, this doesn't have to do with being misogynistic. This has to do with being truthful. I thought it was interesting, I missed it because I was outside with Faith, that there was a proclamation for breast cancer survivors, but yet this is the very board that promoted the bioweapon serum injection, the COVID-19 injection, which has murdered millions of people. There's an indigenous organization that has announced officially, what many have already known, and many doctors as well, that this is a bioweapon serum injection. Many people are continuing to get sick and to get die, and to die from it. You know what? This is all going to come back to you. You know, I normally offer up a book, I'm going to offer up this book, Jim Desmond, to all of you, Becoming Whole: How to Prevent Stockholm Syndrome and Transcend Darkness in Your Life and Relationships, by Meredith Miller. It's great, because it goes into the psychology of how people become enablers of evil. You still have a chance to course correct. Try it out. How good can it get?
Thank you. Next speaker, Jessica Heredia, or Darwin Fishman. Thank you.
Good morning. Darwin Fishman, he/him/his, Racial Justice Coalition of San Diego, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry, Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Stepford, that you're still being subjected to racist and sexist attacks. You know, I wanted to present about the criminal justice work, and I want to be, appreciate the work that's being done and acknowledge it, and it connects to real lives and transforming them, and also for San Diego, connect this to national trends. Specifically, I wanted to start with thanking Supervisor Tara Lawson-Raimer, I continue to be on the ATI, Alternatives to Incarceration, and I wanted to thank you for getting that ball rolling. A lot of those reforms we see in other cities and starting to see in San Diego are giving people not just the alternatives we have out of the criminal justice system, but new beginnings, new starts in transforming lives, and really appreciate that. Then I also wanted to acknowledge the work that Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Stepford has been doing, specifically work juveniles in probation and taking steps like with the process with banning pepper spray, and that attention is really critical for probation. I served on the Juvenile Justice Commission for many years, and I was the second vice chair, and it was a really neglected area while I was there, and that oversight from supervisors and introducing policy and legislation is a really critical component of that oversight. It's not something that the JJC can do by themselves. And then last, I just wanted to say that, a story from a police officer that shared with me about when San Diego started the program for officers having cameras, and how that was opposed by the police union and many others, and what he told me, that once it was adopted, police had the opportunity to adjust to it, they really liked it, they appreciated it, because it did separate them, those that were doing their work right and well, from those that weren't, and that camera gave them that evidence, that proof, and that was part of national reforms that San Diego dragged its feet and finally accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you all so much for this time up here in front of you. My name is Jessica Heredia, and I serve as a Lemon Grove City Council member. I respectfully request that you pull item number 11 from the consent calendar and adjust it at a future date. This is not a routine administrative matter. It is a significant land use issue that directly impacts the quality of our life and our community.
Can you, can you please pause your time for a moment?
Sorry?
Is this item, this is about the Troy Street sleeping cabins, correct?
I'm just asking it be pulled.
That, that is an item that is currently on the consent agenda. So this time is for comments regarding items that are not on the agenda anywhere.
Okay, not even to pull it?
Yeah, so you should, you should say all these comments.
I did put for both.
For consent, because this is if it's nowhere on the agenda, if there's a topic under our jurisdiction, but it's not on the agenda today.
Okay, I will wait for item 11.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm going to go ahead and call the fifth, sixth person, Leanna Labarren.
Oh, sheesh. Hello. My name is Leanna Labarren, and I'm a Lemon Grove native, a concerned mother, and a former Lemon Grove City Council member. While you may have initially been misled to believe the Troy Street project would be well-received in our community, at this point, you have seen the masses.
Please pause your time. So just to, I know that this, that these rules are very specific, but this is time for non-agenda public comment. So that means that any thing that you'd like to say that involves subject matters that are within this Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the agenda today. So this Troy Street, this is, I believe it's item 11, so you should say these comments during the consent agenda, because this is time for comments that have, are not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, randomly chosen, will be Allegedly Audra.
I identify as speaking tomorrow.
Next.
Sorry, what, I, is, was Audra called? I heard, Audra, I heard you in the, Allegedly Audra, I heard you in the audience.
Yes, I said tomorrow, I identify as speaking tomorrow.
That's not how it works. You, these, you put your name in for a comment, and you're, you're called.
She didn't understand, now she wants to speak tomorrow, but she realized she can't speak at both meetings, because the rules are very confusing.
So you're saying you're going to speak tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Next speaker is Kira Noe Way.
My name's Cara. Back to the political theater here. Paloma, I'm going to start with you. You're back to wearing a mask. That's very interesting. You should probably wear it when you come up with all the people that have cancer. And I'm glad that this Board actually knows what a woman is. You guys were all speaking a lot about women today. You didn't use the word uterus holders, or child bearers, or chest feeders, so congratulations. And also, I wanted to acknowledge this room, the way it looks now, it must have been because of all the SEIU purple-shirted mafia members that would come in here and do sit-ins, so I appreciate you guys keeping us safe. Let's see here, Land Acknowledgements. I did want to thank our indigenous brothers and sisters at the Alliance for Indigenous Nations for declaring that the COVID-19 nanoparticle, particle injections and mRNA injections are in fact a biological and technological weapon of mass destruction. Jim, hi, Jim, I hope you had a great summer. Now that Marjorie Taylor Greene has announced that there is weather modification going on in the skies, can you actually acknowledge that? You're Team Red, so I figured, you haven't heard of the Clear Skies Act? You should look into that, considering that's what you have your next eye on. Anyway, that's about it for me. Oh, I also wanted to say, Tara, you acted like you really liked dogs this morning. I think you really like surfing, because we all know that you are neglecting to help protect the abused and neglected dogs in North County at Artisan Road, right? Right? Thank you, everybody.
Well, now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the Board's rules, we will hear from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Carrie Kearnsen, and I'm the co-owner of Ramona Ranch Winery and a Board Member of both the Ramona Valley Vineyard Association and the San Diego Women's Wine Alliance, representing 200-plus growers, wineries, and partners who built San Diego's wine country. Our vineyard was established in 2006, and our winery opened in 2012. We appreciate the effort to clarify the winery ordinance. However, as currently drafted, several changes would unintentionally harm San Diego's boutique, family-run wineries. Our vineyard safeguard open spaces, wildlife, and pollinators while sequestering carbon. Restrictions that limit wine sales in financially viable wineries would cause that environmental stewardship to collapse, cause financial instability, and decrease the economic impact provided by the County of San Diego, or rather, to the San Diego County. We respectfully ask that the input provided by the Ramona Chamber of Commerce and the Ramona Valley Vineyard Association be strongly considered during this revision period. Please create an ordinance that supports, not stifles, the farms and small businesses defining San Diego's agricultural and environmental future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
I'm a small farmer and winery owner in Ramona, and I'm calling to bring your attention to the county ordinance that rather than support small business and family and women-owned farms, may very well put us all out of business unless something is done and done quickly to amend the ordinance. Approved by the board in 2010, this was brought forth as the so-called farm stand ordinance, meaning if you lived on egg-sown property, farmed grapes, made wine from those grapes, and wanted to sell your product from your location, you could buy right. But in operation, what has emerged are severe and arbitrary restrictions that it is nearly impossible to succeed. Members of the Ramona Valley Vineyard Association ask that this board relook at the four-tiered winery ordinance, all of it, and work with the local wineries to implement the recommendations we have identified that would encourage a thriving and sustainable wine industry. Ramona boasts that we have over 40 wineries, but in fact, we have lost five wineries who've closed, four wineries have stopped making wine in preparation for closing, five wineries moved their tasting rooms to cities down the hill that encourage their enterprise, and four vineyards have stopped production altogether. Thank you for allowing us to continue to work with staff to make the whole ordinance that's broken in many places better. Thank you.
Thank you. For clarification, that speaker was Elaine Littleton. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Through all the board, this issue deserves a board letter of warning or disapproval. HNTB hired to oversee Sand Egg's SR125 towing system, ignored or mishandled problems beginning in 2017, which were finally reported to the board years later. This resulted in tolls being miscollected over six years. HNTB is guilty as sin. There have now been seven audits by several auditors of similar issues over three or four years, wasting our time and money over repeat finding of basic management practices, and HNTB is still there. The auditor found that Sand Egg lacked internal controls necessary to ensure its contracting was transparent, competitive, and compliant with internal and external requirements. Its longstanding internal control weaknesses and record management, lack of standardized processes, and insufficient staff training and oversight contributed to almost all these issues identified by the auditor. It is shocking that the recommendations include basics like setting up a mechanism to track task orders and amendments to the originated contract, ensuring on-calling task order solicitation records are complete and stored properly, documenting the reason for awarding task orders, and clearly defining and monitoring contract deliverables. The auditor is spot on when she said these combined problems, not unexcess Sand Egg to legal and regulatory risk, but all of a sudden increase the potential for inefficiencies.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hello, my name is Karen Bussar. I am not a winery owner nor a vineyard owner, but I am a board member of the Ramona Valley Vineyard Association. My concern is more as an employee of the wineries, with all the restrictions, the feeding limits, the non-agriculture events. It not only impacts the businesses themselves, but also their ability to create jobs within the county, or within the town of Ramona. It also impacts the amount of revenue that they're generating, taxes that they're generating for the county. So the county revenue shares would be down as well. So to impact, the impact that the restrictions for the wineries and the small-use wineries have now, it doesn't just impact the vineyards and the wineries, it impacts the employees, the entire community. So I suggest that these restrictions need to be revised and looked at, and so that the whole county can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller this morning.
My name is Ginny Boni. I'm a native San Diegan, and I own a vineyard, and I'm a winery owner in the Ramona Valley. I am also a board member of the Ramona Valley Vineyard Association and a member of the San Diego County Bitners. Our vineyard was established in 2010, and our winery was open in 2021. As a winery owner, I am concerned about the unintended consequences of these restrictions to the ordinance, to the winery ordinance. The wineries and associated businesses in Ramona are already struggling, and I feel these restrictions will further negatively impact the growth and expansion of wineries and businesses in the region. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson-Reimer, that concludes your request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the general legislative session of September 30th and October 1st. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? We have a motion, is there a second? And we have a second. Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery-Step, and a second by Supervisor Paloma-Giri. Please vote.
Chair Lawson-Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, we now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda, items 1 through 16. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after supervisors pull the items they would like to pull for discussion. So would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion, or have comments on any of the items on the consent agenda, beginning with Vice Chair Montgomery-Step?
Thank you so much. I'm not going to pull anything from this agenda at this point. Just wanted to, I think I want to reserve my comments, but want to vote, register a no vote on item number six as it stands right now. Thank you. I'm going to make some comments after the public.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair Portemagiri?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to register my no vote on item number six. I also have a comment on item number seven I'd like to make after public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is now the time to make comments, or are they saving?
They're saving their comments. They have comments they'd like to make, nothing to pull.
I'm going to make mine, I've got a lot of them. But since this is a packed consent agenda here. But first of all, on item five, I want to say thank you to our staff for working on this. This is the acquisition of a firefighting helicopter, two-engine helicopter. I know a lot of work and effort went into this, and we were able to work with SDG&E and other entities for bringing this forward. And this twin-engine helicopter is going to be able to fight fires both day and night. So very grateful for all your work on this. In January, we brought, my office brought forward the board action to purchase an additional night-flying helicopter. Today's action carries out that action, directing county staff to purchase from SDG&E their Sikorsky S75 Firehawk helicopter. It's going to be crucial for us to help prevent the devastation that we saw and occurred in January this year in Los Angeles. Not completely prevent it, but help prevent it. Public safety is our highest priority as elected officials, and we must never become complacent in our fire efforts preparedness. So I'm going to continue to fight for more resources for our first responders, and because the question is not when the next fire, or if the next fire is going to occur, but when. We must do everything in our power to protect life and property, and today's action is crucial in that effort. I want to thank CAL FIRE and SDG&E for your participation in this effort, and I look forward to seeing this helicopter serve San Diego County for many years. Item six, this is my prioritizing home ownership for San Diegans over foreign investors. Young families are struggling, and I see that the American dream of homeownership slipping further and further out of reach. Homes now cost seven times more than the average income, compared to the three times that average in 1970. Rents continue to climb, and the number of first-time homebuyers has dropped considerably as prices continue to outpace wage gains. At the same time, crushing student loan debt and inflation, especially in the years that have followed COVID, would have sidelined millions of first-time would-be homebuyers. And to make matters worse, international investment firms are investing in the local housing market, has increased, it's up 44% from last year. And $56 billion in the U.S. real estate sales, 15% of which of foreign investment was in California. I'm a capitalist, I believe in wealth generation and investment opportunities. However, we have to ensure those living and working and trying to raise families have access to homeownership before foreign investors. We have to be able to make that case. From a report back on my colleague Supervisor Lawson-Reimer, her item brought in July 2024, looking into corporate homebuyers, we learned that little over 3%, which doesn't sound like a big number, of the single-family residents in our region are non-owner-occupied. There are 77,000 single-family homes in San Diego County. 3% is 24,000. So 24,000 have the potential of being owned by outside or out-of-country investors. The key question is, how many of these are really held? Even if that number is as small as 15%, that's still over 3,600 homes that are owned by foreign investors, that we should have San Diegans come first. With that, I hope that my colleagues will support this item in prioritizing San Diego homebuyers over foreign investors. Item nine, this is on the application for state funding for the Rosecrans Wellness Campus. So item nine is essentially applied for state funding for the Wellness Campus on Rosecrans. I'm supportive of this effort, I definitely need these facilities, including the detox beds, crisis stabilization units, and residential treatment. All on one site, to me, is the answer to dealing with the homeless, and is a solution for getting people into treatment. I just have one question for staff, and I have another comment. On this one, for the campus that we're putting on Rosecrans, is the entire site going to be drug and alcohol-free?
Thank you Supervisor. Through the chair, let me see if our Director Nadia Pavaris is here for behavioral health services.
Is this on? Okay. So through the chair, Supervisor, yes, it will be. And in fact, all of our facilities are.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed. Appreciate that. So I'll be supporting that. Item 11, I'll pull it. So recognizing, so I have some comments, but I'll wait. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson?
I had just a quick question. Is process moving forward? Since we have the public comment after we pull the items, when would there be an opportunity to revisit an item to pull it in the future? I'm wondering if we should change our process to allow the public speaking first before we pull the items, so that they have an opportunity. Item 11 is pulled, so it's not an issue. However, I was just thinking of logistics, moving forward beyond today, perhaps we should rethink the order in which we do it.
Your basic point being, people might say something, and then we would then decide to pull it?
Yes.
But the problem is, is then, once we pull it, people would want to speak to that item that's been pulled at the time that it's pulled, and they've already had their comments during the part of the agenda that's for consent. So I would imagine, I mean, we can talk about it, but I would imagine most people would want to comment like right before we vote on the item, instead of do all their comments during consent, us pull the item, maybe the item ends up like six hours later in the meeting, and then they don't get to talk, because they've already did their comments, because they made their comments on consent.
Excellent points.
Thank you.
However, we really need to think through it, so that the public has a fair shot of us pulling it. Perhaps what we could do is allow to revisit it after the public's comment, if anybody would like to pull something.
I understand your point. That is already our current procedure. So that is a good point, and if that wasn't clear to everybody, we go, basically, we go around, we say, hey, we have comments, I want to pull this item, we pull the items that we know we want to pull, then there's public comment, and if one of us changes our mind and says, actually, no, no, we need to pull this, then you still can pull it.
We've never done it.
We've never done it.
So I just want to make sure it's clear.
Andrew, am I correct? We have never exercised in the last five years, Supervisor Anderson, such authority, but we have it.
I feel better, knowing that we have that authority. I'd just like to make a quick comment on item five. You know, it's outstanding work. County staff, Jeff Collins, Chief Meacham in CAL FIRE, in our county fire, SDG&E, great partners. This new helicopter is going to bring a lot of safety to my district and throughout San Diego County. I just want to thank everybody who worked so closely together. And you know, deals like this are so fragile, and it requires so many people being agreeable in a world that everybody wants to fight. So I just want to thank you all for putting our constituents first, and putting ordinary San Diegans first. Outstanding work, we're so proud of you. The second thing is, there seems to be some confusion over item six, so I'd like to pull item six. And with that, I'm good to go. Thank you.
Okay, so just to summarize, so far, item six has been pulled, and item 11 has been pulled. Have I missed anything, Andrew?
No, you are correct. Thank you.
And Supervisor Montgomery-Step has registered, voted in favor of everything except item four, registered a no vote.
Six.
Sorry, item six. Apologies. And a no vote on item six, but that's been pulled for discussion. Okay, great. So we have the items remaining on the consent agenda, we have items one through 16, and what has been pulled is item six and item 11. So I actually had comments and concerns on item six, I will save that to the appropriate time. I will just make some comments on item five. I'm so excited. Good work, team. We've done it, we're there, we're making it happen. I know this has been a huge effort, you know, requiring a lot of collaboration and compromise and focus, and I think it's really worth it. This helicopter is really important. You know, fires don't stop at night, right? We know that. We can't stop fighting fires and stop saving lives, because the sun goes down. So I think that this helicopter is going to make a really important difference in our community. Our community absolutely deserves the highest caliber of investments in public safety and keeping us safe from wildfires. And I will tell you, probably three or four times a week, since the Palisades fire, my daughter asks, is there going to be a fire in San Diego? She would listen to the coverage on the radio, and she says, excuse, in Spanish-language kindergarten, she says she wants to be a bombero, it's a firefighter. So thank you for everything, and I'm so glad we're here on this item. And then on item nine, I think similarly, like amazing work, and this is really important. You know, we've got a long way to go, but we're making huge progress. You know, we know that when people spiral into crisis, they need somewhere to go. And you know, we launched this Care Before Crisis Plan by 2030, about four years ago. This is our optimal care pathways. And our region's first mobile crisis response teams have scaled up to now responding to over 20,000 calls for care. We've opened six new CSUs, we've doubled residential treatment capacities, and this campus is going to be a really critical step forward in tackling the mental health and substance abuse challenges. abuse challenges that are something that so many families in our region struggle with. So thank you so much, and just really excited to see this move forward. So with that, we will go to public comment. And just a reminder for everyone who are here to comment on item six and item 11, please do not comment on item six and item 11 during the consent agenda, because then I will have to stop you and ask you to please wait until your item comes. So again, item six and item 11, please wait till your item is called. If you have a comment on any other item on the consent agenda, this is the appropriate Do we have a motion for the balance of the consent agenda at this time?
No.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Paloma-Giri.
No.
Okay, and a second by Supervisor Desmond. So with that, we will go to comments.
Thank you Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 15 requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, four in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. Again, as the chair indicated, items six and 11 were pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. Any individuals that requested to speak on the remaining items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, when speaking, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra Mark, Jennifer Royston, and Jay Royston.
Howdy, Judy. My person uses the name Audra. So many things on the consent calendar, as usual. It's going to be interesting to see how the camera guy wants to get these photos of Malaika and Zaya out of the, right, because they're told not to show their faces of Malaika and Zaya Robinson, and so that's why we'll continue to do it. And so with this funding that's going to be coming in for foster care, Tara, since I can't talk to staff, can you ask them why they're hiding sexual assault? And why, you know, they'll add me to the reports in, you know, with CPS, CWS, CFWE, whatever you want to call it, but then they don't want me to testify because they say that I don't necessarily know enough or haven't been around the girls enough, but I think what's happening is they're terrified of me testifying, because we know how much I can say in a minute, right? But it's just interesting, so I'm wondering if you can ask them why they're actively hiding it and obstructing justice, making sure that, you know, Malaika and Zaya Robinson are not being sexually abused in foster care, because you guys get this money, you want to spend $200,000 to have somebody come and help you get as much funding as possible, right, to make sure that families do not get reunified, right, Kimberly? Right. Why are you hiding sexual abuse? Why do you guys not want me to testify? You would think that you would even allow that, but not if you're terrified of hiding what's actually going on within your system and the fact that you are not protecting children. So I'm wondering when they are going to actually protect children within the system that we pay for? Huh? And you're also supposed to be going out of town? I don't think you can be trusted with Monica either, because you guys all know and refuse to do anything about it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Again, I'll ask you to please identify which item on the consent agenda you're speaking about.
Whatever one she just did.
And if...
Number two, sorry, I'm new to this, forgive me.
Please state your name.
My name is Jennifer Royston. Hi, I am just asking that you guys open your hearts, your souls, and your minds to understand that the County of San Diego Child and Welfare Services is directly responsible for San Diego County's human trafficking problem. They hire low-level criminals to gang stalk you, harass you, make false reports to Child Welfare Services and to the Sheriff's Department and to local police officers. I just ask that, I know all of you have children, do the right thing, even though it's not your child. Why? Because God is watching and God will prevail. You can take this moderate game right here and think that you're living the high life, but in all actuality, you are crucifying yourself, because it's written in scripture that God will prevail, and you all will be held accountable, and there is no such thing, God forgives all. God does not forgive the slaughter of His most precious gift to us, and that is His children. I urge you to please use that money to reunite families that have fought their ass off, to do the right thing, to be a part of their children's life, and to become better human beings in this society. Stop being weak, don't have the courage, when you know somebody is doing something for incentives, to say, you know what? We should be stronger than that. We should do the right thing because the right thing matters. I love my child, this is my child, and I just ask that you please do the right thing.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jay Royston. I'm a San Diego County resident for 40 years, and that is my wife, we are fighting for our son. He was taken from us on lies and false allegations. The county hires gang stalkers, they harass us, they chase us throughout San Diego County. My wife has been attacked, we've had her tires slashed for standing up for our rights. We've had county workers at the HHS office in Escondido break our window because we're standing up for our rights. We have judges like Judge Alexander Colero, who takes away your civil rights, denies you, your right to speak, your right to see your child, and you have these manipulating child therapists like Alicia Fay, who manipulate your child, convince them that they're better off without their parents, convince them that their parents are bad, where they're supposed to be unifying children, they're taking them away and planning for them to never return home, fostering them out before the plan is even completed. Their plan is to take children out of the home and sell them off to your foster homes, while these judges, these therapists, these social workers, they all profit, along with whoever in here is planning this, taking that money, not putting it to proper funding to reunify families. They're selling off our children, and our children should be coming home to their parents, where they're loved, they're taken care of, they're not in jeopardy of being sexually abused, emotional harm, physical harm, when there's been no proof, but yet they take their lies and manipulations, and this judge right here supports the molesting of children and the stealing of our children, and it shouldn't be accepted.
Mark, on two, see the YouTube video titled SSRIs and School Shootings, FDA Corruption, and Why Everyone on Antidepressants Is Totally Unhappy. This is a statement from a psychiatrist, he practiced a long time, he worked for one of the pharmaceutical companies and the FDA. It's on that video, 23 minutes.
The drugs, they just wear off over time. You know, you put someone on five of Lexapro, you know, a starting dose, six months later, the effect is usually worn off, and they need a higher dose. You know, 12 months after that, they need a higher dose, and eventually they're maxed out on it, and the person will say to you, I don't even know what this drug is doing anymore, or it's hardly doing anything. And so at that point, they ended up getting put on more and more medications, and eventually you have people on five meds, and the drugs aren't really working. And so I would see this pattern where, you know, you put the drugs...
So he also talks about how the pharmaceutical industry makes claims that this balances, their drugs balancing a brain imbalance. Actually, there's lots of scientific tests he talks about that have been done, there is no proof of that whatsoever. They've tested serotonin levels, drawing fluid from people's spines, looked at brain scans, there's no evidence of that whatsoever, but that's the way they're treating it. Meanwhile, this board and everyone in government completely ignores inflation, which is obviously a huge cause of stress and mental illness. And also, the laws recently that this board and Newsom is passing, has made it so they can arrest homeless now, not people that are actually mentally ill, there were already laws against that, but just people for being homeless and forced drugs upon them. On five, everyone should see this YouTube video title.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
Number five, foreign travel. Such things as new building materials like mass timber and climate risks like wildfires and floods, sounds like they would be best seen and discussed locally. Having the conference in Denmark sounds a bit like a UN Agenda 21 indoctrination campaign. Three, interesting that you single out the Hispanic community by promoting the Spanish academy. It mentions nothing about teaching the officers about Spanish basics, and it is offensive that you single out the Hispanic persons in this way, since there are similar opportunities to broaden community relations with every culture, so much for equity. Other than that, it looks like a very thorough report, although I did not see anything real specific about preventing foster care, Polinsky Center, animal abuses. Number nine, behavioral health center. Hope you got the land, no bits for planning like Troy Street. The Wellness Campus is in the Midway District, not central to the county, where while the mental cases and drugies are all over, and it's a bit jarring that the county is financing their 10% matching share of this with county land, since we could use it to build things like homeless housing or low-income housing, which we don't have nearly enough, and the attachments, and there are none but a border resolution, they show it all, the HHS, I doesn't care about sharing the presentation, it does care about getting bonds for it, so...
We'll hear from the next caller.
All right, and I'm going to be speaking on item seven, no, six, seven, eight, 10, and 11, but I know that you're pulling the other two, so. Anyway, so, let's see, Tara, to quote you, you've never exercised such authority, because you're too busy silencing and violating the Brown Act left and right, omissions. Anyways, here we go. Okay, so, let's see, and it's funny how Paloma wants to comment after she hears the people. Okay, got it. Rules for thee. Anyway, so Supervisor Paloma-Giri traveled to Japan under the so-called program on aging. Okay, so we're told Japan is covering the costs, but why? What's the purpose? And more importantly, how does this serve the people of San Diego? At the last meeting, when I spoke during non-agenda, I was interrupted and told what I was saying wasn't under your jurisdiction, right, Tara? Yet somehow traveling to Japan is. Abundance of hypocrisy, absolutely no public trust, and, okay, not item 11, let's see, let's see, 10, let's see. Maternal and Child Health Block Grant. Once again, it's labeled equity-based, yet it divides instead of unites. No grant should pit black newborns against Hispanic, Asian, Native, or white newborns. If you truly care about equity, you'd serve all families with the same compassion, not use the color of their skin as a tool for control or political point. And, but yet, this is how government keeps the people under control, keeping them divided and pitting them up against each other to fight each other instead of them. And what else? Last comment. Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, regarding what Jim said, San Diego can't be prioritized, Jim. When you got...
Good morning. My name is Becky Rapp, and while I fully support item nine, expanding behavioral health facilities, I ask this board a hard question. When will we finally acknowledge that today's marijuana is causing mental health disorders? We keep expanding treatment beds, but we're ignoring one of the biggest drivers behind the mental health crisis affecting our youth, the explosion of high potency marijuana products. These aren't the low THC products of decades past, these are highly concentrated addictive substances, up to 90% THC, often pumped full of illegal toxins and chemicals. That science shows are directly linked to psychosis, schizophrenia, depression, and suicidal ideation in young people. And yet, instead of protecting our communities, marijuana businesses are being pushed deeper into the neighborhoods, and even our back country, under the assumption that everything will somehow be fine? It's not fine. Families are breaking under the weight of this mental health crisis, and parents are watching their children lose touch with reality. Building behavioral health campuses is critical, but it's time this county goes upstream. Prevention and policy must come before treatment. If we don't act now, years from today, San Diego will be facing a far greater crisis, and no amount of treatment beds will be enough. Please acknowledge the harms, protect our youth, and start addressing the source of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Item three, AB 109, move felons from state prison to local jails incapable of handling the influx or security needs. Then the state crazies added alternatives to criminals doing time for their crimes, and then decided to give criminals taxpayer-funded transit and housing because they love creating more victims. Item five, nine months later, and I have not heard a confirmation whether or not the county's helicopters that can fight fires at night are actually operable or not. Is a $23 million chopper from SDG&E at a discount? Or is Joel giving a kickback to his campaign funders again? Why do the county buy from SDG&E with no guarantee on the 5.5 million needed for maintenance and fuel? It's not Carl who doesn't want Joel as treasurer tax collector, it's your allies on the board, figure it out. And shame on Tara, passing her TDS fears onto her poor daughter, that's as bad as crazy Katie Porter. Item seven and eight, no to any out-of-country travel for any supervisor ever. Joel and Monica already wasted over 22,000 of our tax dollars on a trip to Austria to learn about socialist government stack and pack projects, could have just gone to San Diego. Nobody should receive a salary while on this vacation. No free trips for tax-evading Paloma or Kimberly Jardina and/or Jennifer Bransford Coons and Julie Gickle to Japan for one full week in December for an aging and health tour of a country with the world's second highest suicide rate. They're obviously doing something wrong. The Japan Center for International Exchange is pushing transnational migration, aka imported slave labor to replace Japan's native aging population. Item nine, 6.3 billion in state debt bonds, and now the county's got 29 million to get people hooked on drugs, that's all BHS does. No to fascist public-private partnerships to make a political NGO rich off the backs of vulnerable people. Behavioral health and wellness is an oxymoron. On the entire consent, why is Tara shocked that people would dare want something from a 16-item-full consent calendar to be pulled, especially with contentious items? Why are Monica and Paloma too cowardly to even comment? This is why people are voting no on 50, Newsom's election rigging that gets people like this in office. No thanks to all of it, as always.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good morning Supervisors. My name is Madison, and I want to thank you for your continued investment in maternal and child health through the Title V Block Grant and the Perinatal Equity Initiative. As we move forward with today's funding acceptance, I urge you to prioritize public education about the risks of cannabis use during pregnancy. Recent data shows a steady rise in marijuana use among... Recent data shows a steady rise in marijuana use among pregnant women. Many turn to cannabis for anxiety, nausea, or sleep, often because they fear prescription drugs, can't afford care, or believe cannabis is safer. But the science is showing that THC crosses the placenta and may disrupt fetal brain development, especially with today's high potency products. Cannabis use during pregnancy has been linked to increased risk of preterm birth, low birth weight, and later issues with attention, behavior, and emotional regulation in children. The problem is many women don't know this. They're navigating a system of conflicting advice from doctors, dispensaries, online forums, and peers. Some dispensaries even recommend cannabis to pregnant women despite the known risks. And too often, healthcare providers don't feel equipped or supported to have these important conversations. As the county continues its important equity work through programs like the Black Infant Health Initiative, it's critical we don't leave the marijuana issue out of the conversation. We must create impactful, culturally relevant education and outreach that empowers pregnant women to make informed decisions, especially those facing systemic barriers to care. And while every mother deserves to be supportive, it's the unborn child who cannot advocate for themselves and who most deserves our protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hello, my name is Justin James Castro, aka Gambler Hermes. I'm going to be running for the fourth Board of Supervisors district because last week, or last meeting, I was told that the Board of Supervisors are unable to look into a newfound device that could recycle our plastic, turn it into fuel, and possibly generate money so that we could reduce taxes on the American people. Instead of that, you guys want to go ahead and send someone to Japan in order to reduce jobs, replace them with AI and all that. This is acceptable. Helping out local, I mean, helping out someone that is, in the United States, created a wonderful machine that would actually do major work and reduce our landfill, you're not allowed to go ahead and comment on. You're not allowed to go ahead and investigate. You're not allowed to go ahead and invest in that. But you can invest in taking away our jobs. You can invest in replacing our jobs with AI. That is what our new Board of Supervisors that was selected, not elected, did. And if I don't win, I can challenge and look for fraud in the particular locations that I want that you, Tara, refuse to go ahead and show me the data that you already looked at, that you're hiding from everyone. Do you want me to show you the video where you said you were going to look into it? And you chose to file a restraining order? Oh, no, you had the county file a restraining order so that you didn't have to answer that question. So I am, and then on top of that, if I lose, I'm going to be setting up, start filing the paperwork to sue the shit out of the county and get retribution and make sure that each of you guys go to jail for hiding election fraud and not investigating and not talking to people. And you want to go ahead and buy another helicopter?
We'll hear from the next caller.
Okay, I'm just reminding everyone that there is no clapping in the chamber. There's no disruption of these proceedings. If you want to show support for something that somebody recently said, you can have silent support, you could have a sign. That's silent, you could twinkle, that's also silent, you could do thumbs up. So I saw one woman, the woman with the poster with the child. So this is your first warning, I saw you clapping. So if we have any more clapping, then I'll have to ask you to leave. Thank you.
And Riddle, go ahead and please.
Yes, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to share some thoughts regarding Agenda item 10. I do support the two grants that are coming our way. The staff report mentioned several past programs here at the county that we have worked on, and I wanted to share the one I worked on, which was what we called I-3, the Infant Immunization Initiative, because we were concerned about children having access to good healthcare and receiving inoculations if they needed them. I'm glad that we are now looking broader and receiving funds from the state. I do have some concerns because, as the staff report points out, infant mortality is an important indicator of overall population health. And it goes on to list some of the reasons that might affect infant mortality and in general, infant health. I wanted to call your attention to last week's press release from UCSD was entitled "Large Genetic Study Links Cannabis Use to Psychiatric, P cognitive, and Physical Health." The study goes on to talk about two genes that have been isolated as being affected by cannabis use. One, and I won't go into the longer name, talks about the interruption that occurs with cannabis use to the cell assembly and signaling between nerve cells, particularly the brain. And that previous studies have shown that this disruption of this particular gene causes conditions in children that include impulsive personality, obesity, and cancer metabolism. The other gene that it mentions that are disturbed by marijuana use has been shown to...
Hear from the final caller.
Biggle, I need to apologize to the Board of Supervisors. I signed up to comment in air, and I yield my time back.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on the items in the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I know that Supervisor Montgomery-Step had mentioned she would reserve her comments till after public comment. So if you still have comments, or you want to wait till those pulled items?
Yes, I was going to comment on the items that have been pulled. And so I will comment at that time, the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional comments? Go ahead, Supervisor Gary.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I just want to make a brief comment on item number seven. I want to thank county aging and independent services staff, along with the Japan Center for International Exchange and the American Association of Retired Persons for helping organize this upcoming trip. Aging and independent services has already done some tremendous work to help support seniors and people with disabilities through our community. As the board letter makes clear, the focus of this trip will be around how we can better support seniors and people with disabilities, avoid social isolation, as well as how we can be best prepared to take care of these vulnerable populations in the event of future disasters. Studies show that chronic isolation increases the risk of many harmful medical conditions, including heart disease, stroke, dementia, and can significantly shorten life expectancy. Social isolation also strains our healthcare systems. As seniors who are isolated are more likely to visit emergency rooms, require hospitalization, and experience slower recovery. These are preventable costs, both human and financial, if we invest in connection and community. And I am very excited to collaborate with and learn from our partners in Japan on how we can best tackle this issue. Additionally, given the realities of climate change, we must also be doing everything we can to respond to future unprecedented climate events like the floods we experienced in January of 2024. Our seniors and neighbors with disabilities need to know that the county will be positioned in the best way we can to mobilize and keep them safe when future disasters occur. Thank you again to everyone involved in the planning of this trip, and I look forward to fruitful discussion regarding these topics in the future, as well as assisting and hosting our Japanese colleagues next year when they come to visit San Diego. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Seeing no comments, there's a motion by Supervisor Gary, a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We will, sort of looking at the time and the items in front of us, we will now move to item 16. I mean, sorry, 16-6, apologies. And then after that, we will do item 11. So we'll do item six and item 11. Then we're going to take a lunch break, and then we will go to item 17. So everyone has transparency and can plan your days accordingly. So again, item six that was just pulled, and then item 11 that was just pulled. Then we'll go to lunch, and then we will do item 17 immediately after lunch, and we will take items 17, 18, 19, and 20 and 21 in order. Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, great. So item six. Supervisor Desmond, you already made comments on that. It was pulled. We will go to comments from, we'll do from, we'll go from comments, public comment, and then we will have time for conversation and discussion.
Just a second, can I make a motion to approve?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sir Desmond has made a motion to approve. We will go to public comment, and then we will have discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We have 28 requests to speak on item six, 17 in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 22 ecomments, five in support, 14 in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item six by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so I will ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite for the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Mark, and Kristin Carriga. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Oh, goodness. One minute. My person uses the name Audra, so Jim, I'm just wondering, you know, is this not xenophobic? Because is this talking about also the illegal aliens that are here in San Diego, and you don't want them to buy, and you would like, you know, people who are, you know, citizens of our nation to purchase those? Does that, is, Jim? Does it include that? Or no? So no, it's just for people outside of the U.S. who want to come in and purchase here, right? Okay, I was just, you know, trying to be clear on that. So we are supporting illegal aliens buying homes. So foreigners should buy homes here, if they're here. But if they're not, they're not allowed. Correct, right? Right. Good for you, Jim. You're doing some really good stuff, right? 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 Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm the Reverend Kristin Carriga. I'm a Unitarian Universalist minister at the First Unitarian Universalist Church of San Diego. I'm here to ask you to vote no on six. This feels like a veiled attempt to keep people of Asian-American and Pacific Islander descent from buying homes in our community. I am someone, not only a minister, I'm a resident here. I would love to buy a home. I am somebody who is really would love to support affordability and housing options, but we know what the consequences are when we restrict housing. California passed Alien and Law Acts in 1913 and 1920, which prohibited Japanese immigrants from buying land. These laws were eventually overturned by the California Supreme Court as discriminatory in 1952, but they still created irreparable harm for our communities for decades. Alien law, land laws not only prevented Japanese-American families from owning homes, but also denied them the opportunity to build generational...
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional individuals, Jennifer Royston, Erin Suramoto-Grossi, and Jay Royston. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Mark, so, yeah, it's a good idea to give first-time buyers that are, that are local residents or American citizens. The idea of giving foreign investors any opportunity to buy our property is absolutely treasonous. And this is the globalization, that the United Nations owned the stock in all the corporations. And our sovereignty was the only thing standing in the way of a corporate stalker see worldwide. Worldwide control, which is what they want. And we're on the verge of it right now. People need to see Rosa Koyre, part one. That'll bring it up. The real title is longer, Beneath the Green Mask, something like that. Koyre is K-O-I-R-E. Rosa Koyre, part one on YouTube. Very important. Or we'll lose our country. Ignore it and see what happens.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Jack Shu, Christopher Kennison, and Patricia Mondragon.
Good morning, Board. My name is Erin Suramoto-Grossi. I'm the Associate Director at Alliance San Diego. I'm also Yonsei, fourth-generation Japanese-American. California passed Alien Land Law Acts in 1913 and 1920, which unfairly targeted and discriminated Japanese communities, including my own family, from being able to own land. This had a tremendously negative impact on our communities for years. It prevented us from owning homes. It prevented us from generating generational wealth, and it put a target on us. My family were ordinary people. They owned a laundry cleaning business. They were seamstresses. They were strawberry farmers. And this served as the precursor that led to their incarceration during World War II. We have seen this before. We have done this before, and we need to reject it now and always. So that's why I urge the Board to reject this Alien Land Law proposal.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for pulling this item. It is an item that really deserves some special attention because of the threat it makes to our community, particularly Asians. My name is Jack Shu from the City of La Mesa. You know, yes, we need to address increasing costs of housing, but there are many methodologies of doing that that really truly uses the term equity as its intended, not the way it was analyzed in the writing for this, this item. We can easily shift the funding from those who are really wealthy, they're buying very wealthy homes, and shift it into systems that will pay for affordable housing, as it has been proposed by some of you in the past, not to turn away funding, foreign funding. That seems insane. Please reject this proposal.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Christopher Kennison, civic engagement organizer at Alliance San Diego, representative of District Four and District One. As y'all have heard from previous speakers, that Alien Land Laws not only prevented Japanese-American families from owning homes, but also denied the opportunity to build generational wealth and were part of a series of racist policies that led to Japanese-American incarceration in World War II. Item six is an attempt to have San Diego County lobby for Alien Land Laws in California and goes against our county's core values of equity and inclusion. We urge the Board of Supervisors to oppose item six and reject Alien Land Law Proposals in our county and state. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Jesse Schmitty, Clint Carney, and Quinton Grounds.
Patricia Mondragon with Alliance San Diego. The laws Supervisor Desmond points to from Texas, Florida, and Georgia unfairly target AAPI and immigrant communities, labeling them as foreign adversaries and barring them from purchasing land or long-term leases. These policies disguise discrimination as housing reform. We should not be following or advocating for policies created in Texas and Florida. We are California. Yes, we all agree San Diego needs affordable housing and real paths to homeownership, but this proposal goes after people instead of problems. Housing is a human right. It should not be a weapon or a commodity. We are, if we're serious about affordability, let's address all this, all speculation, including U.S.-based Blackstone, which holds over $1 trillion in assets and more than 12,500 properties. How many of those are right here in San Diego? Let's go after speculation, both foreign and domestic, and make sure that it holds our IT's account.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, supervisors. My name is Clint Carney. I'm on the advisory board of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. I work with Survivors of Torture International, urging a no vote on item number six. I work with Survivors of Torture International, urging a no vote on item number 6. We have clients from all over the world, some of those from countries who are adversaries. We have torture survivors from Iran, torture survivors from Russia. We have people from many other nations. We want them to heal. We want them to succeed. We want them to get a job and pay taxes, and we want them to have an opportunity to buy a home here. So thank you very much. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
All righty, Supervisors. It is my pleasure to speak before you today. My name is Quinton Grounds. I'm a proud Filipino-American, and I ask that the Board oppose consent to item 6. While housing is one of the most important topics in San Diego, this item fails to capture the complexity of the conversation and instead chooses to fall back on a line of thinking that will only alienate the immigrant community. It would be one thing to request the state explore restrictions on corporate housing speculation, but it is something else entirely to scapegoat the immigrant community for the problems we as San Diegan, San Diegans are all facing. If it is similar to what is passed in Georgia, SB 420, or Texas, SB 17, this item will promote anti-immigrant sentiment and open the door for the same government-backed discrimination that we've seen in the Chinese Exclusion Act, Japanese internment, and a slew of Alien Land Acts that California supported in the past. Please do not repeat this history and vote no on item 6. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Pedro Rios, Ian Sorrello, and Nicole Lilly.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Jesse Schmitty, State Policy Manager for Alliance San Diego and a member of the Coalition for Equitable Development. Here urgently asking you to oppose item 6. While framed as a measure to support local homebuyers, this proposal echoes the same exclusionary policies that we've seen take root in states like Florida and Texas. Item 6 is a veiled attempt to prevent immigrants from having the opportunity to purchase a home here in San Diego. As a third-generation member of the Babareño Ventoreño Band of Schumash Indians, this proposal is not only incredibly offensive, but it is hurtful and grounded in a racist history targeting our AAPI community members. You see, if the Supervisor were actually serious about ensuring San Diegans had the opportunity to purchase a home free of market manipulation, he would go after some of San Diego's largest corporate investors like Blackstone, Kilroy, HIG, Irvine. That list goes on. The largest Wall Street investor, Blackstone, is single-handedly the largest corporation owning the most number of single-family homes in San Diego. With that, we ask you to oppose item 6. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Pedro Rios. I'm Director of the American Friends Service Committee's U.S.-Mexico Border Program. I want to thank Supervisors Aguirre and Montgomery Step for seeing through the smokescreen of item 6 and voting no, and urge the rest of you to do the same. Item 6 would codify discrimination and allow for racial disparity to be part of how people own land and own property in San Diego County. We simply have to look at 100 years ago, the measures that were done then that were ruled unconstitutional would be done the same today. Urging you to vote no. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite the remaining speakers in person, Kevin Vino and Caroline Thesard.
Hello. My name is Nicole Lilly, and I'm the Executive Director of Our Time to Act and a resident of District 1. Our Time to Act organizes powerful youth for an inclusive, equitable, and sustainable future in San Diego. Our work focuses on achieving a future where every young person has the opportunity to access housing. That is why I'm, I am speaking to you today to strongly oppose this item. This proposal is exclusion and segregation masquerading as opportunity for homeownership. Providing housing for all San Diegans cannot be achieved by repeating or redesigning the oppressive housing practices of our all-too-recent past. This proposal, down to its San Diegan's first title, is filled with language and practices that literally alienate other and discriminate against immigrants and people of color. This is yet another attack on our most vulnerable communities. This proposal is unacceptable and cannot be amended to hide its true intentions. Housing justice will not be achieved through repackaged injustice. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Kevin Vino. I'm here to talk about that we need to have more pro-housing policy here in San Diego. We can't keep pretending like immigrants are the problem for everything that goes wrong in this area. If we had more pro-housing policies, this would not be an issue at all. You talked a lot about places like Texas and Georgia for passing this bill already, but those places already have pro-housing policy. You didn't mention places like Vancouver, Canada, which also passed a similar ordinance but has some very similar anti-housing policies like here in San Diego. That's the results you're going to get. More sky highs, more sky-high prices of housing because you're not actually addressing the issue. You're just scapegoating immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Caroline Thesard, and I'm a constituent of Supervisor Desmond's in District 5. Please vote no on item 6 today. Alien land laws have a horrible history in our country and have no place in our county or our state. I have friends who were born abroad but who have lived and worked here for decades. Some of them are homeowners and some of them would like to be. You can craft policies that prevent corporations and large investors, both foreign and domestic, from buying up homes meant for single families. But targeting anyone foreign-born, as has been done in some other states, is absolutely not the way. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for Jennifer Royston, Jay Royston, and Ian Sorrello. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
I have nothing against foreigners, but thought should be given to letting them establish a permanent foothold in this country right away. I think this kind of makes sense, and an additional advantage, this would reduce the danger of unfriendly foreigners spying on our institutions, kind of like the spying business in Copton, New York recently. Your business should be to support county residents over foreigners who tend to manipulate our markets as well. This is not to escort Asians, Pacific Islanders, or any other group of people who are once foreign from buying houses, only foreigners who should not, I think, be buying homes which our own people need.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Here, and item 6 should be a clear yes. This isn't about race. It's about protecting San Diegans from being priced out of their own homes by massive foreign corporations and investors who don't live here, don't raise families here, and don't care about our communities. Some are trying to twist this into an attack on the people, on people of color, and that's false. It's dangerous. And because every working family, no matter their background, deserves a fair chance to own a home in the county they live in. And let's see, what else did I, let's see. This local measure, this measure is about local control, community stability, and protecting the future generations from the same global interests that already own half the housing market. BlackRock and other mega entities have exploited loopholes for years. And yeah, that needs to stop. So I'd say yes. It's all bullshit, but yes. Vote to protect San Diego, not foreign profit.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Right ban on any and all non-citizens buying up homes away from American citizens, which must include ending the county's sanctuary county of criminals policy. Yes to ban on all bad political policies and politicians that have increased home prices in California. That includes Ricardo Lara's wasting of our tax dollars on DJ Kitty Glitter and extravagant lunches rather than fixing the insurance crisis. PDSF for Paloma is marching around the county building with a murdered and missing indigenous women bandana. I'm not sure if that qualifies as red face, but her talking point is that every American citizen is on stolen land. So can Paloma leave my people stolen land? Can the federal government expedite the deportations of all illegal aliens as well as of all communists and socialists, including those who masquerade as reverends or get paid to speak? Ironically, Alliance San Diego receives funding from a slum complex in National City. Housing. Why don't Texas, Georgia, and Florida have a housing crisis despite taking in millions of California refugees? Why are there so many refugees? Why doesn't racist Mexico or China allow Americans to own land? Think about it.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
For Hermes, every single meeting, I have to listen to you guys say how we are living on stolen land. Now you're allowing, I mean, three of the board members, four of the board members are definitely going to allow other countries to buy up our property. I mean, buy up the stolen land. Why don't you just give it back? I, I mean, instead of selling it off to foreign countries, why don't you give it back to the natives that live here? I, I, I don't understand. Or is it just talking points to separate us and make us hate each other and do this? Anyone who isn't a, doesn't, isn't a citizen here shouldn't have a house here. They don't pay tax, they don't live here. They, they don't contribute anything. Foreign countries could go buy up all the land here and displace every single one of us. We are number five move-out city because we allow foreign countries to buy our property. We allow businesses to buy our property. We allow places to go ahead and sub.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Hamira Yusufi with the Partnership for the Advancement of New Americans, Panna. I'm a constituent of Supervisor Desmond, and I'm calling just because I'm utterly shocked that this item was put on the agenda, let alone the consent agenda. I want to express my severe disappointment on this item. I urge you to vote no. Alien land laws demonstrate the history of discrimination in this country. They have not only prevented Japanese-American families from owning homes, but also denied them the opportunity to build generational wealth, and were put on a series of racist policies against Japanese-Americans post-World War II. The laws unfairly target and discriminate millions of AAPI and other immigrant communities. Prioritizing housing for San Diegans requires policies that actually makes more affordable housing, right, that protects those units, not discriminatory policies. So please oppose this item now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the final caller.
AKA Mary Davis, and I am strongly in support of this, and I'm actually shocked to hear the amount of pushback on this. My goodness, we're in a housing crisis, are we not? So how can anybody who is pushing the housing crisis narrative be against something that would actually help San Diegans afford a home? The tropes of racism or segregation are misguided because really it's not a race thing, it's a supply and demand of rich people. And there is a worldwide supply of rich people who would love to live in our climate and environment and profit off the backs while the poor people in Spring Valley are going without services. So what I'm asking is that you support this or else be exposed for the frauds you are if you do not support every opportunity to increase housing supply and affordability for San Diegans. Lastly, I go to the land acknowledgement. You keep talking about unceded land, and yet the city of San Diego and the county, I have yet to see them give any surplus land.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Could I make a clarification on this?
Okay, just one moment. So I'm going to turn to Subarza Desmond first, because this is his item, and then we have a number of comments from my colleagues.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the callers calling in. And this item was not intended to stop any individuals, not even immigrants, that came here recently to our country from buying a home. This is going after. The intent of this, and allegedly Audra asked me here at the DIAS, but it's best we don't engage in that way. But the intent is to stop the foreign Blackstones, the foreign larger corporations from coming in and buying up our properties. Not to stop any individuals, not to stop that any race, any color, any creed from buying a home here in San Diego County, or even the country for that matter. It's the foreign investors. That was the intent. So I, and it was not the intent for individuals to not be able to purchase homes here, not even to rule out immigrants. So it was to go after and stop the foreign investment firms, companies, from buying a home. If you're going to buy a home here and you live someplace else in the world or the planet or something like that, and you want to buy a house here, and you're going to occupy it and it's your third, fourth, fifth, I don't care, home, but it's not for foreign, not an investment or not an investment firm, go ahead. Individuals can still purchase property here that live in other countries. So that was the intent. I'm happy to tighten up the language on this item if necessary to, or maybe even bring it back if necessary, but it, this is only for large foreign equity investment firms from buying up property in single-family homes in California or San Diego County. That was the intent. So I appreciate my colleagues for pulling this. I appreciate hearing the potential consequences of way, the way it was brought forward, but that was not the intent at all. It's just for the going after the large investment corporations. So I don't know if we can add that language to it, if it's too late, but that was, that was the intent. It was basically following up what Supervisor Lawson Reamer did, brought forward previously on current, I guess it would say, U.S. investment companies. This would go, this was similar going after the foreign investment companies. That was the whole intent. Thank you.
Subarza Aguirre.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I am still in firm opposition because the board letter does reference SB 17, which was passed in Texas, and that legislation is very clear in restricting property ownership by individuals and entities from certain countries, which is just absolutely unjust and unconstitutional. If we were to replicate such actions in the state of California, it wouldn't just target foreign governments or quote-unquote hostile actors. It would cast a wide and deeply discriminatory net of homeownership against educators, healthcare workers, small-business owners, scientists, and families who live, work, and contribute to this community. These are people who pay taxes, volunteer in our communities, and raise their children right here in San Diego. We've also seen what has happened in the past in the history nearly a century ago with the so-called Alien Land Laws, which targeted Asian immigrants and stripped them of their right to own property. Those laws were racist and wrong back then, and they're wrong and racist today. So I stand, continue to stand, no matter how we modify it, in opposition to this board letter. Thank you.
Subarza Montgomery Step.
Yeah, just a couple of responses, Supervisor Desmond. It does not, in your board letter, call out firms. It says foreign adversaries. It references people, does not call out firms. And the model states that you have referenced also in the board letter, you know, have the same undertones that this board letter does, which harkens back to the history of this entire nation. We heard from many members of our community from all, all types of different experiences. We know about the Alien Land Law, Laws that have been deemed unconstitutional. We know about redlining in our community that has held many families back from building wealth for themselves. And so this, this letter absolutely does not, it should not be representative of what this county believes. And I know that the title can be kind of sexy for folks and right there cause a lot of division for people. Whether or not that was your intent, that is what is in the black and white letter, board letter, and it is also what would be in the archives of this county. So for those reasons, I absolutely will not support it. Also, just talking about the, the laws that were passed in Texas and Florida, they have ended up in costly legal battles with no meaningful impact on housing prices. The data does back that up. I think we should focus on those current corporate businesses that are buying up a lot of property in San Diego, and we've already done that via a board letter. Restricting this small segment of buyers that you're speaking of won't fix our affordability crisis. In fact, it only worsens the problem by discriminating against first-time homebuyers who are simply trying to achieve... who are simply trying to achieve the dream of homeownership. So instead of chasing this somewhat symbolic ban that could lead to lawsuits, we should focus on real solutions, increasing the supply of starter homes, helping local residents compete in the market. There are many different ways to do that. There are first-time homebuyer programs, there's assistance with down payments. There are many, many ways to do that. This letter really, I think, it just aligns us with some, some values that I personally do not want to be aligned with, and so I will be voting no on this item.
Thank you. I've called, I put myself in the queue next. I wanna say a couple of things. First of all, it is absolutely critical that we ensure that our local community has access to housing first and foremost, and that we support first-time homebuyership opportunities, renters locally. And when we talk about leveling the playing field for our community versus large corporate investors, that's exactly what we did and began working towards with the legislation this board passed over a year ago. Unfortunately, this proposal does not actually add anything to that whatsoever. It carves off a very narrow subsection and targets that narrow subsection, which is foreign investors in a quite discriminatory way. The legislation that's cited in the board letter explicitly calls out certain particular countries of origin, which is extremely, extremely troubling and echoes the history of racism and exclusion in our country. So I also cannot support this today. I will say that I do think there's a lot of work that we need to continue to do. And while the legislation we passed over a year ago targeting corporate landlords was one step in the right direction, I think that there's much more we can and should be doing. And I would welcome the collaboration of my colleagues, and particularly Supervisor Desmond, in looking, for example, at incentives to encourage first-time homebuyership instead of the purchase of second homes by out-of-county investors. And that means all out-of-county investors, including the ones from Los Angeles, San Francisco, and New York. That we should not, we're not discriminating against individuals of certain origin. We need to be fighting to protect folks in our community who need opportunities. For example, I know that the San Diego City Council is currently exploring a ballot measure that would incentivize first-time homebuyership by putting a tax on second homes. That's something interesting that we might wanna explore, second homes that are owned by out-of-county landlords. So I do think there is a worthy discussion about how we level the playing field. But it needs to start from the premise that everybody deserves an equal opportunity, not start from the premise that we want to deliberately exclude certain people from certain countries of origin from having an equal opportunity in this country. So that's where I stand on this today. Thank you for your time. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, and Subarza Anderson has put himself in the queue.
Would this, would the supervisor like a second, a courtesy second for a vote? I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Anderson. Please vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion fails with Supervisor Desmond voting aye, all other supervisors being present and voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. So we now move on to item 11. This is the authorization to negotiate purchase of property for the Troy Street Sleeping Cabins project and adoption of a resolution declaring the land will be used for a public purpose. Would we like to begin with a presentation from staff? Okay, staff presentation? Okay, go ahead.
That's fine. This is an administrative action, which I'll explain later, but if, if-
Would you, would you-
If the supervisor pulls it, wants to see that, that's fine.
Let me ask the supervisor that pulled it. Do you wanna see a presentation or not? Because you're the one who pulled it. So if you don't want a presentation, we don't need a presentation. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board. The board continues to take a strong leadership role in advancing the County of San Diego framework for ending homelessness. The focus of today's presentation is to provide the board an update on the Troy Street Sleeping Cabins project, which is part of the county's efforts to expand emergency housing in unincorporated communities. We call these efforts compassionate emergency solutions and pathways to housing. Here with me to present is Deanna Beck, Director of the Office of Homeless Solutions, and Marco Medved, Director of General Services. I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Thank you, Kim. The Troy Street property is owned by Caltrans and located in the city of Lemon Grove. The property can host approximately- My apologies, I skipped the slide. Thank you, Kim. To provide some context on the county's efforts to expand emergency housing, I'll share some recent history. On September 11th, 2018, the county declared a shelter crisis and affirmed our commitment to combating homelessness. From 2019 to 2021, the county searched over 1,300 sites region-wise to use as interim housing, such as sleeping cabins, safe parking, and safe RV parking facilities. During this time, the state agencies also looked at their own land for interim housing. Caltrans, who owns the Troy Street property, identified as having potential for interim housing use. In 2022, the board approved the implementation plan called Compassionate Emergency Solutions and Pathways to Housing to expand emergency housing options, and the county then moved forward with viable sites that met both development and program requirements for board approval, which included the Troy Street site. This plan was guided by a community engagement process that include people with lived experience, as well as touchpoints with the city of Lemon Grove. In 2023, the state and county began planning for sleeping cabin projects, which included assessment of Troy Street property. In 2024, the board approved the Troy Street Sleeping Cabins project to move forward with development. The Troy Street property is owned by Caltrans and located in the city of Lemon Grove. This property can host approximately 16 sleeping cabins as an interim housing solution for unincorporated areas. Once established, this program would provide 24-hour security and site management, hygiene facilities, internet, meals, as well as case management, housing navigation, access to behavioral health, employment support, credit repair, and other supportive services. The board previously allocated $11.1 million for planning, design, and construction activities. The ongoing operational costs are estimated at $3.6 million per year. I will now turn it over to Marco Medved, Director of General Services, to provide an update on the status of this project.
Thank you, Deanna. The pre-construction activities for the project, such as design and permitting, were completed this spring, in the spring of this year. During the summer, Caltrans attempted to lease the property to the county, but was unexpectedly prohibited by the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA. Over the past several weeks, Caltrans has been developing paths forward to keep the project moving. Upon board approval, Caltrans will request approval from the FHWA and California Transportation Commission, or CTC, to sell the property directly to the county. If this process flows, we could break ground next summer. In summary, if the board approves the resolution today, Caltrans will request approval from the FHWA and the CTC. They must both concur that the county's sleeping cabins project, project, project serves a public purpose. Public purpose means that the property will be used substantially for government functions. If both entities agree that housing people experiencing homelessness is of public purpose, Caltrans can sell the property directly to the county at market rate, which is currently estimated at approximately $2 million, pending Caltrans approval. Upon FHWA and CTC approval, the staff will negotiate a purchase agreement with Caltrans and then return to the board for approval to complete the purchase. However, if either FHWA or CTC do not agree that the sleeping cabins are of public purpose, Caltrans must auction the property. In that case, staff will return to the board to request approval to participate in the auction. The recommendations before your board are to find that the actions are not subject to CEQA, authorize the Director of General Services to negotiate purchase of the subject property, and to adopt a resolution declaring this land will be used for public purposes. Thank you for your opportunity to present. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Sir? Subarza Anderson?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to public comment, and then we'll go to board discussion.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 26 requests to speak on this item, 15 in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 85 e-commerce, five in support, 78 in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 11 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board. And I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite for the first three individuals, Yadira Altamirano, Jessica Heredia, and Sergio Gonzalez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yadira Altamirano. I am a council member for the city of Lemon Grove. Thank you guys so much for pulling the item. Concerning the tiny cabins project, I respectfully request that it be placed on its own agenda item and discussed as a land use at a future date to include sufficient community input. Our community is facing significant challenges related to homelessness and crime, and it is crucial that we recognize that we are already a disadvantaged community. Engagement with residents regarding the rollout of the cabins and the project has been minimal, leading to confusions, concerns about its execution. It has changed many times. There has been further fracture to our community, which, like I said, is already struggling a lot. As parents, we want the best for our children and our community. It is essential to allow more community input on a project that will allow our daily-
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Bear with me, my speech was for, to ask you to pull, so I've adjusted it a little bit. This is not a routine administrative matter. It is a significant land use issue that directly impacts the quality of life in our community. The proposed tiny sleeping cabins are slated to be located just two blocks from a newly-built, state-of-the-art, early childhood education center serving children's ages three to five. This facility is not only the first of its kind in California, but it also is a vital component for our school district's efforts to attract students to Lemon Grove from surrounding areas. This project jeopardizes that mission. Lemon Grove is just a 3.8 mile, square mile town, and it is one of the smallest cities in the county. We lack a city-run police department and rely on limited sheriff services. Simply put, our small and underserved community is not equipped to absorb the impacts of this project. This proposal has already caused significant community backlash, including a recall-
Thank you. And can you please state your name for the record?
Jessica Heredia, Lemon Grove City Council member. Thank you.
The next speaker is coming forward. I'll call three additional speakers, Kiki Jones, allegedly Audra, and Angelica Camargo.
Hello, my name is Sergio Gonzalez, Spring Valley. I'm, got some information from a letter written October 21st, written by Ebony Shelton, dated, well, yeah, today. So I'm gonna look at the numbers. You have already mentioned some of the numbers and, and the cost. But, and the reason I like to do that, because I was an auditor for 10 years, audit supervisor for 20, and an audit section chief for another three years. And we audited billions of dollars, and a lot in healthcare. And I've actually audited some county programs. But if you look at the numbers, they're talking $2 million for land, $11.1 for the build, and then $3.6 for annual services. Now, again, that's $67 million. You break that down based on the users, which would be 2,100, you're looking at 2,700 a month. So the, the use of the money isn't where it should be. And again, the infrastructure that's there isn't capable. And again, if this is really an emergency, why is it taking at least six years to get anything started?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Kiki Jones. I am a Lemon Grove resident. You will hear a lot of people from Lemon Grove that are opposed to this, and they're gonna talk about the brand-new preschool that's two miles, or less than two blocks away. They're gonna talk about the liquor store that's directly across the street from the proposed site. Imagine trying to get your sobriety, and every day that you walk out of this site, there's a blaring sign that says liquor. It is also the only food source store within miles of the location. It's a very dangerous street. It is a intersection where, you can look this up, October 6th, a cyclist was killed in this intersection, hit by a truck. Drugs and alcohol were not involved, it's just a dangerous intersection. There's no bike lanes, there's no sidewalks, and most of these people that are gonna be living at this proposed site are gonna be pedestrians. So not only is it harmful to the community, which we're underserved already. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Angelica Camargo. I live in Spring Valley, and I oppose to these projects, and they rescinded the Jamaica Road area. I'm sorry, that, that property is not in Lemon Grove. All this is Spring Valley, and this street is Lemon Grove. So first of all, it's gonna bring more crime and problems to Spring Valley just because we don't have any help. They're not gonna provide any more sheriffs, they're not gonna provide any more services to our area, and we're already struggling. So that's number one. Number two, I'm here to, basically, combined with the Lemon Grove. Lemon Grove already have enough problems with such a bad mayor as Snow Allison. She is not an open person to talk us, like Monica Montgomery, like Paloma Guire. They meet with us, I mean, she doesn't have any communication with-
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'll invite three additional speakers, Rosa Carney, Michael Brando, and Kira Noe Way.
Talk about racketeering. I mean, you guys, for your little tiny homes, you wanna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on one, right? Imagine how many people could actually be helped if you guys spent our money wisely. Instead, you racketeer with it. This is bullshit, that you would think that you could spend that much money when you could go and spend $5,000 on something that's small and, and house 2,800 people and actually get them off the streets. But you guys like to contract with people or entities like Dreams for Change to provide homeless solutions, when Tent City in San Diego, there's been 22 deaths under Teresa Smith, okay? And you guys are contracting with these people. So you cannot be trusted when people die just from the services that aren't provided. There's sexual abuse, it's also being hidden. So it's like, it's just crazy to think what you guys do with their money and how you waste it. It's a joke.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, if I've called your name. I'll call three additional speakers, Leana LaBaron, Steve Brown, and Gilbert Chavez.
Gilbert is in, I'm sorry. They're all brown now.
Call additional speakers, Mark Stephen Brown, Jennifer Royston, Jay Royston, and Yasmeen Mendoza. Those are all of the in-person speakers. If I've called your name, please come forward. And again, please state your name for the audio record.
Name is Kara, and I am a neighbor of Lemon Grove, also in Monica Stepp's district and living in La Mesa. As a neighbor of Lemon Grove, what happens in their community directly affects the people of La Mesa. I am here to express my strong opposition in the proposed permanent sale of the Caltrans-owned property near Troy Street. I had urged that you guys pull this comment. You did, and Jim, by pulling the comment, that means that we got our, our actual speaking time cut in half. So thank you, but also no thank you, right? This whole effort, this project was led by when Mayor Snow came in here and fraudulently lied to you all, saying that the people of Lemon Grove supported this. That's a lie, we knew she was lying that day. And then she filled a gymnasium full of people. Monica, you were there, right? You've spoken about how you were so scared about all of those people, those upset Lemon Grovers. We're still very upset, the people in La Mesa are also very upset. Grovers. We're still very upset. The people in La Mesa are also very upset. You guys all need to listen to your constituents the way Nora Vargas listened to her constituents and said no to this project. We do not consent.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, this is the biggest scam ever. So the sleeping cabins are expected to cost approximately $11 million to build, additional $3 million in annual operating costs. That's for 60 to 70 sleeping cabins, 140 people housed. 11 mil divided by 140 is 78,571 per person, or 157,142 per cabin. I've already told you guys many times that you can 3D print with Appi's Core, whole homes, like 1,200, 1,500 square feet homes, for $10,000-something dollars. Fifteen times less money. And what's really unbelievable, your operating cost, $3 million per year, that's $8,219 per day. What, is God flying in to make an appearance? I mean, how many security guards do you need for 140 people? That wouldn't, there's unbelievable scams. Someone's scamming money unbelievably off this. It's criminal. You're grossly negligent.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Jasmine Mendoza. I oppose the Troy Street location and the sale of the land. Please consider real, long-term solutions instead of temporary fixes. Options like purchasing 1349 East Main Street for $1.8 million, which is a hotel, or a large hotel located at 855 Saddlewood Elkhorn for $7.8 million that can house 47 to 97 people. That comes with a gym, a community kitchen, and all the needs that they might need. These are not a solution. This is a temporary fix. Find a permanent solution, not something that is temporary. Troy Street is a Band-Aid solution, okay? Lemon Grove is the smallest East County city. It should not be used to be your test dummy for the first-of-its-kind pilot program. We do not have the resources nor the officers to handle this type of project. Stop wasting taxpayer dollars, short-term projects that don't solve problems.
Thank you. And one final call for Rosa Carney, Michael Brando, Leana LaBarren, Steve Brown, Gilbert Chavez, Stephen Brown, and Jennifer Royden and Jay Royden. We'll now move on to those that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
I, it sounds like you were too busy pushing for shelter sites and diagnosing disregarding locals to actually secure the land before building on it. This has got to earn some kind of PVP award, like piss poor planning, as the Marines would say. But I'm glad you admit it. Gives a bit of moral character. I hope it can be applied to all other county abuses, like to the kids in Plinsky, separated families, abused minors, abused animals, and on and on. Why don't you just carve out a bit of land from old parkland you buy up instead of wasting billions of dollars? With all the local objections, I don't think it's purely public purpose. How stupid it is to put pervs near a school or drugies near a liquor store?
Big fat not thank you to Jim for giving the people 60 seconds instead of two minutes. Come on, people. Wake up to their game. Anyways, I wanted to highlight what Kira said regarding Nora listening to her constituents. And that was a show, because she knew she could just dump it onto Lemon Grove. Because she tried, they tried pushing it onto my community here in Benita, but the people, the people, the people pushed back. And it's a shame that both sides are against this, red, blue, in Lemon Grove. I mean, we, the neighbors, have to stand behind our neighbors and push right back, because this is all, I mean, this is, I can't believe that it's gotten to this point after everything that they've already been through. And shame on you, Monica. Shame on everybody. Snow, Snow, you guys got to recall that woman.
We'll hear from the next caller.
She's okay with foreign, rich corporate landlords buying up all the housing in Sando County. No wonder Californians are homeless. Notice touchpoints with Lemon Grove, but zero public outreach or input factored into this project. This craziness is why the federal government has again taken notice of Sando County's corruption and blocked the sleeping shacks. Project costs, scope, and requirements have significantly changed with zero public updates. The county and Monica have a distinct pattern. Now Caltrans is demanding a 15-year-long investment with zero guarantee of funding. You guys can't even guarantee to Lemon Grove that the county will pay for the predictable increased security need, just like Windsor Point. This item should have never been in consent. It should actually be a discussion item in a Wednesday meeting that deals specifically with land use issues. When the county couldn't get Santee or Benita or Spring Valley, it chose Lemon Grove as the county's homeless dumping ground. This 16-mil-plus project has already done immense damage without even being built. Monica's backroom deals have caused all of this. Shame. Nora only said no for the union turning on her. This is all a show of back--
Posted debunking the claims that Jim's proposal would hurt the communities, because that's BS, because anyone here can do it. So besides that, helping out the homeless. You're just looking for a location to funnel fraudulent ballots through. These are the people committing mass amounts of voter fraud, the money that you're sinking into this, $11 million. You just need a location that you could funnel ballots through, send them there. I'm pretty sure you're going to have like a mailing address there. That way, you could go ahead and have homeless people throughout the county wherever you need them. And then you could go ahead and have all the ballots funneled into a location where, you know, it's protected from the prying eyes. I get it. I get that you want to keep silencing us, preventing us from actually voting, I mean, getting candidates that we want, not candidates like BlackRock wants. I mean, yeah--
Next caller.
Of all with Pat. Thank you supervisors for the opportunity to speak. Especially appreciate Supervisor Montgomery Stepp's determination in moving this item and this project forward. Our unhoused neighbors deserve the dignity to come off the streets into interim housing while the right permanent housing solution is sought for them. This particular part of San Diego County needs a boost in its shelter capacity, so we're hopeful for the future of this site and encourage your support of this item. Pat currently operates a tiny home, or also known as QuickBuild, site for families up in Santa Clara County called Evan Blaine. It's one of our most successful interim housing sites across the state. We have people moving out of interim housing and a permanent housing there nearly every week. So we'd be very happy to share our lessons learned or even a tour of that site if it's helpful and want to see this project succeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Name is Lynn Parsons. I'm the convener of the East County Housing First Faith Coalition. Members of faith communities like ours experience issues of homelessness daily as unhoused persons seek help and sustenance from us, and we share their frustration at being unable to find suitable, affordable, and supportive housing. While our goal is permanent housing, temporary solutions like the proposed Troy Street cabins are the only viable option we can see to get people off the streets now. We also understand the needs and concerns of the residents around the proposed area, but we are confident that the county's plans will address the safety and health issues raised by the community. With that proviso, I support this vital proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Over Twist, AKA Mary Davis. First of all, I want to say that this absolutely should never have been on the consent agenda, and it should not have been in your legislative section since it is about land purchase. It should have been in the land use as a separate item for tomorrow. So shame on you for that. And thank you for pulling it. I believe it was Supervisor Desmond. And also shame on Montgomery Stepp for not pulling it. You purport to represent your constituents, and yet when two spoke and wanted it pulled, you completely ignored them. So I understand you don't agree with it, but their voices should have counted for something, and you should have pulled this item. I also want to address Chair Lawson Reamer reference that the opportunity for the public to pull. You were conflating when you told those two people that they were off-topic. They were not, because what they were doing was requesting a procedural item. They were not speaking to the item itself. You should have allowed their non-agenda comments at that time, or put in--
We'll hear from the next caller.
This is Ilka Weston. I am a co-founder of CAP, and I am also a homeless woman. I've become homeless countless times due to the fact that I have severe health issues. There is no solution in San Diego. I don't do drugs. I barely drink unless it's a special occasion. I find that Monica Montgomery, our supervisor, as well as Allison Snow, understands that there are a lot of people like me. I have to live in a home where I'm assaulted verbally and physically, because that's the only roof I could find over my head. I am 100% in support of this. I think we should make a committee of people that have pulled themselves up, because even while homeless, I still go to county meetings, city meetings, and school board meetings. I want to advise we need a committee, but John Brady, the pedophile from lived experience advisor who has a felony, should not be on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Allison Snow, Mayor of the city of Lemon Grove, and I'm speaking in support of item number 11. We need emergency transitional housing, and we needed yesterday. When I came into office originally in December of 2022, I was told that the Troy Street and Hamashaw Transitional Housing Project was scheduled to be completed by October 2023. We are now in October of 2025. The need was an emergency back then, and the emergency need has not relented over time. In fact, the magnitude of the problem has only grown. On October 15th, 2025, the city of Lemon Grove's collaboration with the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, Caltrans, and the city of La Mesa achieved what had not been done in Lemon Grove in decades. We cleared a large encampment, not simply by using the ineffective and inhumane model of shuffling people from one side of the street to the other, but by getting them into permanent housing with wraparound services. They signed leases and will be housed for up to two years. For the safety of a warm home, they can now go into drug rehab and then go home. They can get their unregulated diabetes under control and then go home. They can get mental health services and--
We'll hear from the final caller. This caller is Terrence Griffin. Please go ahead.
Yes, this is Terrence Griffin. I'm calling on behalf of line number 11. And we're here to speak on behalf of prioritizing the development of a low-barrier shelter in Lemon Grove to serve unhoused families in East County. East County continues to face a growing crisis of families and homelessness with limited accessible shelter options tailored to the needs of vulnerable families. A low-barrier shelter in Lemon Grove will provide immediate, trauma-informed, and housing-focused support without restrictive entry requirements, making services more accessible to those in need. Prioritizing this initiative demonstrates a commitment to equity, regional responsibility, and compassionate care for unhoused families. I would like to offer an introduction for a collaborative opportunity between the people of Lemon Grove and the county of San Diego and--
Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. First, I just want to clarify why this is on the agenda today and not on land use. This does not involve our land use authority. Land use authority and land use items have to do with decisions that we make regarding land use that's under our jurisdiction. It does not have to do with whether we do or do not purchase property from other jurisdictions, which is what this item is about today. For context, remind folks that Weeza County have moved forward lots and lots and lots of housing-related and homelessness-related items that were not in our land use authority, many of them involved, and I look at the team now, the construction of thousands and thousands of affordable units on county-owned property. I think I recall us finding eight county-owned properties and moving forward really aggressively to construct more than 3,500 affordable housing units on county-owned land. That was also similarly not a land use item, because that was not a question of land use in our incorporated jurisdiction. That was a question of how county property is utilized. Just like how this building is utilized is not a land use authority item. So just wanted to make sure for folks who weren't clear why this was on today instead of tomorrow, just wanted to clarify that for everyone from a procedural standpoint. So Supervisor Montgomery Stepp has her hand in the queue, and after that Supervisor Desmond.
Yes, thank you so much for that clarification. Unfortunately, with controversial items like this, there is a lot of misinformation, you know, understanding where community members are, some who spoke over the phone that are supportive, some who are here that are obviously not supportive. But today's action does not approve the purchase of the Troy Street property in Lemon Grove. It does authorize county staff to negotiate the purchase of the property from Caltrans. This step is about due diligence, making sure we understand the terms, the costs, and conditions before bringing back to the board a proposal to complete the purchase of the property. We have heard, community members, as I said, certainly will continue to acknowledge that. But this project has evolved as state and federal requirements have shifted, and that has understandably caused frustration and delays. Here's what changed. Originally, we planned to lease the property from Caltrans. Because the land was purchased with federal grant funds, Caltrans needed the approval from the Federal Highway Administration to lease the property. They did not give that approval. So under the previous federal administration, they did not object to Caltrans leasing the land at below-market rent for homelessness solutions projects. But under the current federal administration, that approval was denied, stating that the property is excess land that needs to be sold. So today's action simply allows us to begin those discussions to see whether a purchase is even feasible. If Caltrans and FHWA agree that this Troy Street project, which will provide non-congregate emergency housing for people experiencing homelessness, serves a public purpose, the estimated cost would be around $2 million, again, for a site that would remain publicly owned and used for public benefit. If the county buys the land, it will have to be used for public purposes for 15 years. Public purposes could be emergency shelter for people experiencing homelessness, like the Troy Street project, a public park, a public works project, and our public safety facilities. As we have been doing with the Troy Street project, we will continue to communicate transparently with Lemon Grove residents as this process moves forward. Ultimately, purchasing the land rather than leasing it will give the county more control and long-term flexibility. I really want to also take this moment, because again, this is an administrative action. Why it was on consent, we've had several meetings. We have canvassed the community. We have had many, many different conversations. County staff has presented at the Lemon Grove City Council. There has been a lot of-- There has been a lot of interaction and back and forth. And in fact, when we talk about the cost, one, quite a few of the things that came out of the community interactions, especially around design, was the 24-hour security. There are design mechanisms put into this project based on community input. So when we talk about the annual cost, a lot of that is because we did our due diligence and our absolute best to include community input and then to take that input and input it into the project. But this is the very real life-saving interventions and measures that we're talking about. I have to take the time right now in here to acknowledge Irma Perez, a 43-year-old mother of three that was found lying in a flooded culvert near the railroad tracks along Main Street. This is just a few miles from the proposed site. I truly believe that her death was preventable for a lot of different reasons, but access to safe, supportive environment, like the very project that we're talking about right now, this is what I'm committed to. I don't want... Irma should not have died, and I don't want to face that situation again because we had the opportunity and did not act on it. So I want to move this item forward. I, again, have been very committed to this. I will continue to be committed to it. We will continue to engage with community, but there is a realization that there are going to be community members that don't want this, no matter what we do and what we say. And I've made the decision that, at whatever cost it is, I have been dedicated to making sure that there are solutions for people who are out on the streets in our communities that qualify for this type of help that would be given to them at this type of project. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and move this forward. This is, in my opinion, a moral responsibility that we have to implement solutions like interim emergency housing. This is what we are supposed to be doing, so I urge my colleagues to stand with me in approving this item and moving us to the next step. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate... I got a couple of questions for staff, and I realize this is just for the purchase of the... This is just for the purchase of the properties. But on your, on your slide three, I guess it was, where you're showing a picture of the potential, I guess, layout of the site. I don't think it... Is that easy to pull up? Thank you. On this one, you're showing a gated fence across the entrance there, and the facility is all fenced in. Are people free to come and go?
Yes.
Supervisor Desmond through the chair. Yes, people will be... I'll first say that intakes into this facility are not on the first-come, first-served basis. They are coordinated through our outreach team.
Please answer my question.
Yeah, and so people are free to go, as many people are accessing services in the community, behavioral health or others. They also have jobs. Many of them will have employment, so they will be able to leave the property and come back during regular hours.
Is it a drug- and alcohol-free environment?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I hear... Stop, please. Supervisor Desmond, this is the first warning to folks who just were disruptive in the chamber. Please be respectful. If I... Folks are disruptive again, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Thanks.
So I'm sorry. It is a drug- and alcohol-free...
Yes, drugs and alcohol are not allowed on the property.
And then are the residents required to be in any kind of mental health or treatment substance use programs?
They are not required. However, we will have behavioral health, access to behavioral health services for all residents who are in need of those services. They can get an assessment and be referred to the appropriate services based on their needs.
Okay. And I realize they're not a jail. They're not... This is not a jail or confinement. But one of the things I've seen, unfortunately, and I haven't been a fan of tiny homes, and I don't want them in my district, and even with shelters, is even though shelters, I mean, it's... We have to have a path for people to get healed, but with shelters, and that's all the questions I really had, but these are more comments. Unfortunately, you know, shelters are drug- and alcohol-free, but then people leave the shelters, and they go out and use drugs and alcohol or whatever. They get their fix, and then they come back in. And, you know, this site, I was looking at it. You've got Sweetwater Road, which is right in front, which is four-lane road with, looks like a center turn lane, the Troy overpass. There is a Troy Street overpass, there's four lanes with, it looks like another center turn lane. Then you've got the 125 sitting right there, too, which is six lanes with a median. Unfortunately, and I want to be delicate to this, you know, these... Unfortunately, people who live right next door to, you know, to this close to freeways and roads are not the more affluent areas that have the means to fight back. They're working, folks that are working jobs and things like that, and to have, and their families. You have people potentially, I guess, just coming through your neighborhoods that, you know, uninvited is a real concern. It's a huge concern, but we got to do something else. We just can't ignore the people that need help. And I do, I'm a big fan of local control. I mean, having local control in your own community, your own city council members... I was the mayor of San Marcos for 12 years and on that city council before. Local control is huge, and unfortunately, it keeps getting eroded by the state. So I would rather see money, these monies and dollars, go to treatment facilities where people have to be in treatment, where people, you know, unfortunately, we've gotten to the point where we should be able to take people involuntarily into, you know, if they're on drugs and they're out of their mind, we just, we can't just leave them on the streets or put them in tiny homes and let them continue the abuse of themselves. So I'm not going to be in favor of this. I'm in favor of local control, and that's my primary reason. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Montgomery Stepp.
I think... I hesitate to even respond to that. You really just made a lot of assumptions about the type of people that will be here. Have you ever been to this area?
Yes. We've been there.
You're asking me?
Yeah.
I have not been to this site. I've been to the area, I've been on the roads, Sweetwater and 125 many, many times.
Okay. All right. Well, I would just say that it is a good project. It is a very needed project. It's been in the works for a while. You talked about being a mayor. The mayor did call in. And so, you know, this is an interim solution. It certainly is not permanent. We should, as we are, we continue to, as item number nine did on the consent agenda today, as we were awarded state funding last week with partnering with the City of San Diego, including behavioral health services with a project that we were awarded to, to rehab a hotel. We are doing that work. This is an interim solution for people that I think you are grouping all into one category, and it's feeding into the narrative in our communities about the type of person that is homeless, and that is not helpful long-term. I know it may help you in your short-term goals, but it's not helpful long-term for this county.
I'll call myself. I put myself in the queue. I'm happy to second the motion. Just meant to make a couple of comments. We have a homelessness, like a pretty extensive homelessness challenge here in our community, and we've made really a concerted focus and made really concerted progress. And the primary role that the county does and should play in tackling the homelessness crisis is really looking at mental health and behavioral health services and substance abuse services and continuing to build those out, continue to build out treatment facilities, and we've done that, and we're continuing to do that. That's been one of my very, very top priorities since I was elected, and I'm very proud of the progress that we've made in terms of expanding treatment facilities, including an item we just moved forward today regarding the wellness campus, which is extraordinary and exciting. All the CSUs we've built, all the mobile crisis response teams, you know, we have offered and created just really very innovative opportunities, including housing for folks who are in outpatient treatment, which is something that Supervisor Desmond has championed and I've supported, and in fact, this whole board has supported, to say, you know, if you're in outpatient treatment, you need a place to go to stay drug-free, we should provide that, and we've done that. But we know we also have a diverse population of unhoused individuals in our community. And while, you know, about half are struggling with substance abuse and mental health disorders, about half are not. Families, kids, kids who go to school every single day, who don't have a place to go home and sleep, who the only place that they get to eat is in school, free breakfast, free lunch. They often don't have a shower. Sometimes they're sleeping in a car under an overpass. We've got veterans in our community that served our country, that sacrificed a lot and have nowhere to go. We have people in our community, especially seniors, who've been priced out because of rising costs of rents and homes. And so there are a lot of people who, you know, need a place to go. And we, I think, have an ethical and moral duty to do everything we can to put a roof over the heads of people who are currently sleeping on our streets. In my view, it is frankly, it is not just embarrassing but immoral that in one of the wealthiest countries in the world, one of the wealthiest countries in the world, we have people who are sleeping under an overpass. So that, I think, has to be the context for this conversation today. And I do want to note, it is primarily the responsibility of our cities to build these kinds of shelters and to build opportunities for people to have a place to sleep. But we also know that some of our cities are really underfunded and really little, like Lemon Grove, and don't have the resources and the support and the ability to negotiate with the governor and get the donation of sleeping cabins and negotiate with Caltrans to be able to make this kind of investment a reality. And I think it's a responsibility of the county to be a good partner to the cities who can't fulfill their homeless obligation themselves, and to be able to be a partner in that regard. You know, and I just want to, I'd say, this is a project that this staff has been working on a long time, and I think I really appreciate the feedback that you've taken from the community in looking at, you know, security and all the kind of aspects of running this, putting these tiny homes in place to be, really be responsive to community concerns. It did escalate the cost and the ongoing cost, but I think that that, being responsive to community concerns, is worth it. So if anyone in all of this, I think, I find, has behaved frankly quite shamefully, it is the federal government who had an agreement with us to lease this land to us for a public purpose that was really important and has reneged on that agreement. And it's really, I think, that is pretty abhorrent, that there's... So that, and I don't want to have that go unmentioned, that the federal government has reneged as a partner in trying to tackle and do something meaningful about homelessness in our community. So we have a motion, we have a second. I see no one else with hands up. If nobody else wants to speak, we will go to about...
Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes. With Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now break for lunch, and we will return at 2:00.